Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The local time is 5 o'clock PM, and we will now start the Federal Aviation Administration Office of Commercial Space Transportation, or AST, public hearing for the Programmatic Environmental Assessment for the SpaceX Starship Super Heavy Launch Vehicle Program at the SpaceX Boca Chica Launch Site in Cameron County, Texas. Thank you, everyone, for participating this evening. My name is Jennifer Piggott, and I will serve as your neutral facilitator this evening. I'm with ICF, who is supporting the FAA as an independent third-party contractor. This online public hearing is being recorded, transcribed, and translated. I would like to call your attention to the global icon at the bottom right of your Zoom screen. If you click on this icon, you can choose either English or Spanish to ensure you are listening to the hearing in your desired location. If you need assistance with Zoom during the hearing, you can use the chat feature located at the bottom of your screen to message the meeting host. We appreciate your participation in this online public hearing. We would much rather be with you in person, but with the current conditions, we want to provide all the information we can while protecting everyone's health. We're going to conduct this as closely as possible to a typical in-person public hearing. Please make note of the phone number for this hearing. The phone number is (833) 548-0276. Meeting ID (883) 94232774. Password (4300505). If you experience difficulty with your internet connection at any point during this hearing, you can call this number to listen to the hearing. Additionally, individual internet connections and banned lists may impact your viewing experience this evening. We recommend closing all apps and programs and limiting other streaming or downloads during this hearing. Finally, we're running this hearing using Zoom Webinar, which mutes all participants and restricts video feeds. Only the meeting host can unmute you. We will conduct the online public hearing in two parts. First, AST will provide a presentation in both English and then in Spanish. Then, we will conduct a facilitated comment session where interested parties can provide oral comments for the record. We will not host a question-answer session during this hearing. Please submit comments by the close of the comment period, which is November 1, 2021. We invite you to submit comments orally at tonight's hearing, electronically via the project email address, which is spacexbocachica@icf.com, or mail to Ms. Stacy Z, spacexpea care of ICF 9300 Lee Highway, Fairfax, Virginia 22031. Additionally, AST will make tonight's presentation available on the project website. I would now like to go over a few ground rules for tonight's hearing. Please remember, this hearing is being recorded, so please know inappropriate language or comments. When we get to the comment session of tonight's hearing, I will call on preregistered commenters first in the order in which they registered, followed by other commenters that indicate they would like to make a comment this evening. We will receive as many comments as time allows. Please note, we do have a very large number, over 100, participants on the call who previously registered to speak, so we will be asking everyone to keep their comments to no more than three minutes, and this time limit will be strictly enforced this evening. If you are not called on to provide an oral comment today, you can provide those comments electronically or in writing. Please remember, all comments, regardless of how they are received, are weighted equally. Again, we will make every effort to receive as many oral comments as possible during tonight's hearing. We appreciate the chance to share the proposed project and environmental process with all of you. We wish we could be together in person, but we are glad to get them together virtually. Again, the purpose of this online public hearing is to share information about the Programmatic Environmental Assessment, provide information on how to provide comments, and to receive oral comments. I would now like to introduce Ms. Stacy Z with AST, and Stacy will introduce herself as with her other FAA and SpaceX team members with us on tonight's call. Stacy?
Thank you, Jennifer. Hi, I'm Stacy Z. I'm the Environmental and Stakeholder Coordinator/Program Lead for this SpaceX Boca Chica environmental project. Other folks from the team tonight here include Anna Cushman, the Lead for SpaceX Licensing, Jacob Canton, the Lead for SpaceX Boca Chica Licensing, and Amy Hansen and Chelsea Clarkson from the Environmental and Stakeholder Coordination Team. Now, I'm handing this over to Shadir Ijoldi, who is presenting in Spanish tonight.
Buenas tardes, soy Shadir Ijoldi, Inspectora de Operaciones Espaciales en la Oficina de Transportación Espacial Comercial. Estoy aquí con mis colegas de División de Protecciones, Stacy Z, Anna Cushman, Jacob Canton, Amy Hansen, and Chelsea Clarkson. Yo les proporcionaré la información en español. En este momento quisiera señalar que hay un icono en la forma de globo terrestre hacia la esquina inferior derecha. Si selecciona ese icono, usted podrá el idioma español, y así podrá escuchar la presentación en el idioma de su preferencia. Una traductor está presente en las oficinas españolas de Zoom para traducir esta reunión y para asistirle con cualquier comentario o pregunta. Estaremos compartiendo la presentación en inglés y después en español.
Thank you, Stacy and Shadir. We will now begin the English presentation. A Spanish version of the same presentation will be played immediately following the English presentation.
Hi, I'm Stacy Z. I'm an Environmental Protection Specialist with the FAA's Office of Commercial Space Transportation. I, along with Anna Cushman and Chelsea Clarkson, will explain the FAA's licensing process and the draft programmatic environmental assessment referred to as a PEA for the SpaceX Starship Super Heavy Launch Vehicle Program at the SpaceX Boca Chica Launch Site in Cameron County, Texas. Afterwards, Shadir Ijoldi will provide the same information in Spanish. After the presentation, you will have the opportunity to provide oral comments on the potential environmental issues outlined in the draft PEA. We are holding this public meeting because SpaceX is proposing to operate its Starship Super Heavy Launch Vehicle at its Boca Chica Launch Site in Cameron County, Texas. Starship Super Heavy Launch operations require a permit or license from the FAA. The National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, requires the FAA to analyze the potential environmental impacts of a proposed licensing action. The FAA is analyzing the potential environmental impacts for this proposed action and is collecting comments on the draft PEA. As SpaceX plans future activities as part of its Starship Super Heavy Program, the FAA would analyze the environmental impacts of these future activities in a tiered environmental document, as appropriate. A programmatic document is a type of general, broad NEPA review from which subsequent NEPA documents can be tiered. Programmatic NEPA documents may be prepared for broad federal actions occurring over a longer period of time. Once a programmatic EAs prepared, project-specific EAs could tier off the original programmatic document. As SpaceX plans future activities as part of its Starship Super Heavy Program, the FAA would analyze the environmental impacts of these future activities in a tiered environmental document. Today's discussion focuses on the actions proposed in the PEA. This slide shows the FAA's process for reviewing a vehicle operator license application. The process can occur over a period of months or years depending on the applicant's proposed operation, and it begins with pre-application consultation. Pre-application consultation is the part of the process where the FAA starts coordination with the applicant on their proposed operation. Once the FAA has accepted a license application, the formal evaluation period begins. During this part of the process, the FAA conducts several reviews on policy, payload, safety, airspace integration, financial responsibility, and environmental. The environmental review will be discussed in more detail shortly. Upon completion of the evaluation, if the FAA makes a positive determination and grants an authorization, the next part of the process is an operational phase. This includes compliance monitoring and safety inspections of the operator's licensed activities. An authorization for a vehicle operator license is valid for the period of time necessary to conduct the licensed activity, but may not exceed five years from the issuance date. A licensee can then renew the license by submitting an application to the FAA. SpaceX's application for the proposed Starship Super Heavy operations at the Boca Chica Launch Site is currently in the evaluation phase of the licensing process with the FAA. SpaceX's proposed Starship Super Heavy Program consists of suborbital and orbital launches of both the Starship vehicle without the booster and the two-stage Starship Super Heavy vehicle. During a suborbital launch of the Starship vehicle without the booster, the Starship would launch from the vertical launch area, also known as a launch site, and land back at the launch site or downrange either in the Gulf of Mexico or on a flooding platform in the Gulf. During development, SpaceX is proposing to conduct up to 20 Starship vehicle suborbital launches annually. As the program progresses, SpaceX is proposing to conduct up to five Starship vehicle suborbital launches annually. Each launch would include a landing. SpaceX is also proposing to conduct up to five Starship Super Heavy vehicle suborbital or orbital launches annually. The Starship Super Heavy vehicle would launch from the launch site and then, following the launch, perform an immediate boost-back and landing of the super-heavy booster. The booster landing may occur at the launch site or downrange in the Gulf of Mexico, either on a floating platform or it would be expended into the Gulf of Mexico. After the Starship second stage completes its suborbital orbital mission, the Starship second stage may land at the launch site or downrange in the Gulf of Mexico, Atlantic Ocean, or Pacific Ocean on a floating platform. SpaceX's first proposed mission is a launch of the Starship Super Heavy vehicle and involves the super-heavy booster first stage landing in the Gulf of Mexico and the Starship second stage landing off the coast of Hawaii in the Pacific Ocean. This proposed mission has not yet been authorized by the FAA. Operations would include closures in and around the launch site. For the analysis, SpaceX estimates that the total number of annual closure hours should be 500 hours for nominal operations and 300 hours for anomalies. This image shows a proposed SpaceX Boca Chica Launch Site. SpaceX's proposal includes two integration towers with associated launch mounts, tanks to hold the propellants and commodities, including liquid and gaseous nitrogen, water, oxygen, methane, helium, and hydraulic fluid, and a crane. This image does not include some of the other proposed infrastructure mentioned in the draft PEA because SpaceX is still deciding the final location and design. However, the other proposed infrastructure mentioned in the draft PEA will be within the launch site.
The FAA is the lead federal agency for the PEA. There are five cooperating agencies who are included due to special expertise and/or jurisdictions. NASA has space-launch special expertise. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has expertise regarding threatened and endangered species and national wildlife refuges. The Lower Rio Grande National Wildlife Refuge is located near the launch site. The National Park Service has special expertise regarding historic properties. The Palmetto Ranch Battlefield National Historic Landmark and the Palo Alto Battlefield National Historic Park are located approximately 3 and 19 miles, respectively, from the launch site. The U.S. Coast Guard provides maritime safety and security expertise during launch operations. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is responsible for regulating the deposition fill material in waters of the United States. SpaceX has applied to the Army Corps of Engineers for a modification to its Clean Water Act Section 404 permit for impacts of the proposal on waters of the United States, including wetlands. The Texas Historical Commission, Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, Texas General Land Office, Texas Department of Transportation, and the U.S. Navy are participating agencies on the project. This slide lists the environmental impact categories that are analyzed in detail in the draft PEA. The following slides present a high-level summary of the potential impacts for many of the impact categories. Please refer to the draft PEA for a full discussion of potential environmental consequences as well as proposed mitigation measures to avoid, minimize, or mitigate the potential
The proposed construction and operations would emit air pollutants. Most of the emissions would occur from SpaceX's proposed power plant and natural gas pretreatment and liquefaction. As discussed in the draft PEA, emissions are not expected to result in an exceedance of the national ambient air quality standards. CO emissions may exceed general conformity rule thresholds. However, the proposed power plant would be subject to TCEQ air permitting requirements, and SpaceX would comply with the permit and any associated mitigations. Noise from individual launches, including landing and static fire engine tests, is expected to be heard by people in the surrounding communities, including Brownsville, Laguna Vista, Port Isabel, South Padre Island, and across the border into parts of Mexico. Cumulative noise in the surrounding communities, whether from multiple events of a single operation type or from all of the individual events combined, is estimated to be below levels associated with adverse noise exposure. For sonic booms, predicted overpressure levels for a starship landing range from 1.2 to 2.2 pounds per square foot, or PSF, and for a super-heavy landing range from 2.5 to 15 This figure shows modeled sonic boom overpressures for a super-heavy landing at the launch site. As I mentioned, the predicted overpressure levels range from 2.5 to 15 PSF. The 11 to 15 PSF levels would be concentrated around the launch site. Levels would be reduced to 4 to 6 PSF at South Padre Island. Visual effects include nighttime light emissions, particularly when the launch vehicle is on the launch pad at night. The effects also include the visual presence of launch-related infrastructure, including the integration towers and crane, as well as the launch vehicle themselves. SpaceX would need to implement a number of measures to minimize visual effects. The proposed action has the potential to adversely affect historic properties. Potential effects could result from visual or auditory effects or from ground vibrations. The FAA has made a finding of adverse effect for historic properties and is currently conducting National Historic Preservation Act Section 106 consultation with a state historic preservation officer or SHPO and other consulting parties. As part of this consultation process, the FAA, in consultation with the SHPO and consulting parties, will be amending the current Section 106 programmatic agreement. All adverse effects to historic properties will be mitigated through the Section 106 consultation process, including development of a memorandum of agreement. The proposed action would not result in a permanent incorporation of any Section 4F property. SpaceX's proposed launch activities would have temporary intermittent impacts on the access and availability of some Section 4F properties. Section 4F properties would experience increased sound levels during launch operations. There is also the potential for impacts caused by launch anomalies. Some of these impacts will be mitigated via consultation with the officials that have jurisdiction over the 4F properties. The FAA has made a preliminary determination that the proposed action would not result in more than a minimal physical use of any 4F property and would not result in a constructive use. SpaceX's proposed construction would result in the filling of approximately 26 acres of floodplain and 17 acres of wetlands. Impacts to waters of the U.S., including wetlands, will be mitigated through SpaceX's Clean Water Act Section 404 permitting process. The FAA has determined the proposed action would adversely affect species listed under and critical habitat designated under the Federal Endangered Species Act. The FAA submitted a biological assessment to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and requested to initiate formal consultation per Section 7 of the Endangered Species Act. Adverse effects to listed species and critical habitat will be minimized through the Endangered Species Act consultation process. The FAA will not conclude its NEPA process until the Fish and Wildlife Service issues a biological opinion. The FAA is also conducting Section 7 consultation with the National Marine Fisheries Service, or NIMPs, but does not expect the proposed action will result in adverse effects to listed species and critical habitat under NIMPs jurisdiction. The final PEA will document the results of all inter-agency consultations. The proposed action is consistent with existing land uses at the Boca Chica Launch Site. As discussed earlier, the proposed action includes 500 hours of annual closures related to nominal operations and 300 hours of annual closures related to anomalies. Closure areas would be established prior to launch-related operations and publicized by Cameron County. The FAA is not responsible for issuing closures. Resources for additional closure information can be found at the bottom of this slide.
Now that we have provided an overview of the PEA, we will discuss the current PEA schedule and how you can remain involved. The FAA carried out coordination with state and federal agencies throughout preparation of the draft PEA. The FAA has also initiated agency consultation with federal resource agencies, such as the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, National Marine Fisheries Service, Texas Historical Commission, and government-to-government consultation with Native American tribes. We are currently in step four of the PEA schedule. The PEA was published on September 17th with an initial 30-day comment period. The FAA received requests to extend that comment period, and the extension was granted. Today is a draft PEA public hearing, and the public comment period on the draft PEA closes on November 1st. The next step is for the FAA to publish the final PEA, which will incorporate public comments received on the draft PEA and will announce a finding on the proposed action, either a mitigated finding of no significant impact or a notice of intent to prepare an environmental impact statement because one or more impacts are significant and cannot be mitigated to levels below significance. Comments on the draft PEA can be submitted either by email or mail to the addresses on the slide. We request that comments be submitted by Monday, November 1st to ensure that they are considered in the development of the final PEA. The FAA cannot guarantee that comments received after November 1st will be considered in the development of the final PEA. Before including personal identifying information in your comment, be advised that your entire comment may be made publicly available at any time. While you can ask us in your comment to withhold from public review your personal identifying information, we cannot guarantee that we will be able to do so. The draft PEA and a blank public comment form are both available on the FAA's website at the link provided on the slide. The FAA's website also includes a place to sign up for the project mailing list. Members of the mailing list will receive project updates, including notification of the FAA publishing the final PEA and the FAA's finding. The remaining portion of tonight's meeting is reserved for providing oral comments. Jennifer will explain the process. Thank you for that English presentation. We will now play the same presentation in Spanish. Please note, the Spanish presentation is a little bit softer, so you may want to turn up your volume. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Shadir Ijoldi y soy una Inspectora de Operaciones Espaciales en la Administración Federal de Aviación en la Oficina de Transportación Espacial Comercial. Yo junto a mis colegas les explicaremos el proceso para la licencia de lanzamiento que es autorizada por el FAA y la evaluación ambiental programática en desarrollo, abreviada como PEA, para el programa de SpaceX del cohete Starship Super Heavy en el sitio de lanzamiento de SpaceX en Boca Chica, en el condado de Cameron, Texas. Después de la presentación, usted tendrá la oportunidad de proporcionar sus comentarios orales sobre los posibles problemas ambientales de los que se habla en el PEA en desarrollo. ¿Por qué estamos aquí? Estamos llevando a cabo esta reunión pública porque SpaceX está proponiendo operar su cohete Starship Super Heavy en el sitio de lanzamiento en Boca Chica, en el condado de Cameron, Texas. Las operaciones de lanzamiento del Starship Super Heavy requieren un permiso o licencia otorgada por la FAA. La Ley de la Política Ambiental Nacional, o NEPA, requiere que la FAA analice los posibles impactos ambientales de la autorización de la licencia propuesta. La FAA está analizando los posibles impactos ambientales bajo la NEPA sobre la acción propuesta y solicitando comentarios sobre el PEA en desarrollo. Asimismo, como parte de los planes futuros de los programas de SpaceX del cohete Starship Super Heavy, la FAA analizaría los impactos ambientales de las actividades futuras en las diferentes fases de los documentos ambientales según corresponda. Evaluación Programática Ambiental. Un documento programático es un tipo de evaluación general amplia del proceso NEPA, a partir de la cual se pueden desprender posteriormente otros documentos. Los documentos programáticos de NEPA pueden ser preparados para acciones federales amplias que ocurren en un periodo de tiempo prolongado. Una vez que la evaluación ambiental programática se prepare, otras evaluaciones específicas se derivarían del documento original. Como parte de las actividades futuras de SpaceX del programa Starship Super Heavy, la FAA analizaría los impactos ambientales de las actividades futuras en un documento que se derivará del original. El día de hoy la discusión se enfoca en las acciones propuestas en el PEA. Proceso de concesión de las licencias del FAA para los operadores de vehículos espaciales. Esta diapositiva muestra el proceso del FAA para evaluar la aplicación de la licencia para los operadores de vehículos espaciales o cohetes. El proceso puede tomar meses o años dependiendo de la operación propuesta por el aplicante y comienza con la consulta para la pre-aplicación. La consulta para la pre-aplicación es la parte del proceso donde la FAA comienza a coordinar con el aplicante la operación propuesta. Una vez que la FAA ha aceptado la aplicación para la licencia, el periodo de evaluación formal inicia. Durante esta parte del proceso, la FAA conduce evaluaciones. Durante esta parte del proceso, la FAA conduce varias evaluaciones sobre la política nacional, la carga útil, seguridad pública, integración con el espacio aéreo, responsabilidad financiera, e impactos ambientales. Una vez finalizada la evaluación, si la FAA toma una determinación positiva y le concede la autorización, la siguiente parte del proceso es una fase operativa, la cual incluye el monitorio del cumplimiento y las inspecciones de seguridad de las actividades autorizadas. La autorización de una licencia para operador de cohetes es válida por el periodo de tiempo necesario para conducir la actividad para la cual la licencia fue aprobada, pero no debe exceder cinco años desde la fecha que fue emitida. La persona que posee la licencia la puede renovar enviando una aplicación al FAA. La aplicación de SpaceX para el lanzamiento del cohete Starship Super Heavy en Boca Chica se encuentra en la fase de evaluación del proceso para obtener la licencia con el FAA. Operaciones de lanzamiento propuestas. El programa propuesto de SpaceX del cohete Starship Super Heavy consiste en lanzamientos suborbitales y orbitales del vehículo Starship sin el impulsador Super Heavy y el cohete de dos etapas Starship Super Heavy. Durante el lanzamiento suborbital del vehículo Starship, el cohete sería lanzado desde el área de lanzamiento vertical, o sitio de lanzamiento, y volvería al sitio de lanzamiento o se desviaría hacia el Golfo de México o hacia una plataforma flotante en el Golfo. Durante el desarrollo del programa, SpaceX está proponiendo conducir hasta 20 lanzamientos suborbitales del vehículo Starship. A medida que progresa el programa, SpaceX está proponiendo hasta cinco lanzamientos anuales suborbitales del cohete Starship. Cada lanzamiento incluiría un aterrizaje. SpaceX también está proponiendo conducir hasta cinco lanzamientos suborbitales u orbitales del cohete Starship Super Heavy anualmente. El cohete Starship Super Heavy se lanzaría desde el sitio de lanzamiento y luego, a continuación y de manera inmediata, la primera etapa o el impulsador Super Heavy volaría de regreso y aterrizaría. Luego de que la segunda etapa del cohete Starship termine su vuelo suborbital o misión orbital, podría aterrizar en el sitio de lanzamiento o se desviaría hacia una plataforma flotante en el Golfo de México, el Océano Atlántico, o el Océano Pacífico. La primera misión propuesta por SpaceX es el lanzamiento del cohete Starship Super Heavy e involucra el aterrizaje de la primera etapa en el Golfo de México y la segunda etapa del cohete aterrizando en la costa de Hawaii en el Océano Pacífico. Esta misión no ha sido autorizada aún. Las operaciones inclurían los cierres dentro y alrededor del sitio de lanzamiento. Para este análisis, SpaceX estima un número total de cierres de 500 horas para operaciones nominales y 300 en caso de anomalías.
Ladies and gentlemen, for those just joining the meeting, as a reminder, we just finished the presentation in English. We're now playing the same presentation in Spanish, and then we will resume the meeting in English following this Spanish presentation. Thank you.
La imagen muestra el sitio de lanzamiento de SpaceX en Boca Chica. La propuesta de SpaceX incluye dos torres de integración con las montures de lanzamiento asociados, tanques para propellantels y materia prima, incluyendo nitrógeno líquido y gaseoso, agua, oxígeno, metano, helio, y líquido hidráulico, y una grúa. Esta imagen no incluye alguna de las infraestructuras mencionadas en el PEA en desarrollo porque SpaceX aún está decidiendo sobre la ubicación y el diseño final. Sin embargo, el resto de la infraestructura mencionada en el PEA en desarrollo está ubicado dentro del sitio de lanzamiento. Agencias líderes y colaboradoras. La FAA es la Agencia Federal que lidera el PEA. Hay cinco agencias que están incluidas en este proceso debido a su experiencia y/o jurisdicción. La NASA tiene experiencia en lanzamientos espaciales. El Servicio de Peses y Vida Silvestre de los Estados Unidos tiene experiencia en cuanto a las especies amenazadas y en peligro de extinción, y Refugios de Vida Silvestre Nacionales. El Refugio Silvestre Nacional del Bajo Río Grande está localizado cerca del sitio de lanzamiento. El Servicio Nacional de Parques tiene experiencia especial en propiedades históricas. El Monumento Histórico Nacional del Campo de Batalla en el Rancho Palmito y el Parque Nacional Histórico del Campo de Batalla Palo Alto están localizados a tres y 19 millas respectivamente del sitio de lanzamiento. La Guardia Costera de los Estados Unidos provee experiencia en seguridad y protección marítima durante las operaciones de lanzamiento. El Cuerpo de Ingenieros del Ejército de los Estados Unidos es responsable de la regulación y disposición del material de relleno en las aguas de los Estados Unidos. SpaceX ha solicitado al Cuerpo de Ingenieros del Ejército de los Estados Unidos una modificación al permiso de la Sección 404 de la Ley de Agua Limpia debido a los impactos de la propuesta en las aguas de los Estados Unidos, incluyendo los humedales. La Comisión Histórica de Texas, el Departamento de Parques y Vida Silvestre de Texas, la Oficina General de Tierras de Texas, el Departamento de Transporte de Texas, y la Base Naval de los Estados Unidos son agencias que están participando en el proyecto también. Categorías de los impactos analizados en detalle. Esta diapositiva lista las categorías de impactos ambientales que serán analizadas en detalle en el PEA en desarrollo. Las siguientes diapositivas presentarán un resumen de alto nivel de los posibles impactos para muchas de las categorías de impacto. Por favor, consulte al PEA en desarrollo donde encontrará una descripción en detalle de las posibles consecuencias ambientales, al igual que las medidas de mitigación propuestas para evitar, minimizar, o mitigar los posibles impactos. Categorías de impacto analizadas en detalle. Calidad del aire, clima, ruido y uso de las tierras compatibles con el ruido, efectos visuales, recursos culturales, Ley del Departamento de Transporte, Sección 4F, recursos hídricos, recursos biológicos, recursos costeros, uso de la tierra, materiales peligrosos, desechos sólidos y prevención de la contaminación, recursos naturales y suministro de energía, socioeconomía, justicia ambiental, y riesgos de seguridad y salud ambiental de los niños. Impactos en la calidad del aire. Las operaciones y construcción propuestas emitirían contaminantes del aire. Muchas de las emisiones se generarían de las plantas de energía y el pretatamiento y licofacción del gas natural. Como se discute en el PEA en desarrollo, no se espera que las emisiones excedan los estándares ambientales de calidad del aire. Las emisiones de monóxido de carbono pueden exceder el umbral de la Regla de Conformidad General. La planta de energía estaría sujeta a los requisitos de permisos del aire de la TCEQ. SpaceX cumpliría con el permiso y las mitigaciones. Impactos del ruido. Entre los impactos del ruido se incluyen los aumentos en los niveles de sonido debido a la construcción, operaciones en las instalaciones, lanzamientos y aterrizajes. Se espera que los ruidos derivados de los lanzamientos, incluyendo los aterrizajes y los eventos de las pruebas estáticas de los motores, sean escuchados por las personas en comunidades circundantes incluyendo Brownsville, Laguna Vista, Por Isabel, Isla del Padre Sur, y atravesando la frontera en algunas partes de México. El ruido acumulativo en las comunidades circundantes, ya sea de eventos múltiples o de una sola operación, o de todos los eventos individuales combinados, está estimado en ser menor que los niveles asociados con exposición adversa al ruido. Se predice que los niveles de sobrepresión del aterrizaje del Starship varían dentro del rango de 1.2 a 2.2 libras por pie cuadrado y para el aterrizaje del Starship Super Heavy entre 2.5 a 15 libras por pie cuadrado. Esta ilustración muestra la sobrepresión resultante de la explosión sónica durante el aterrizaje del Starship Super Heavy en el sitio de lanzamiento. Como lo mencioné con anterioridad, la predicción sobre los niveles de sobrepresión varían dentro del rango de 2.5 a 15 libras por pie cuadrado. Alrededor del sitio de lanzamiento, los niveles de sobrepresión pueden alcanzar de 11 a 15 libras por pie cuadrado. Estos niveles se reducirían al rango entre 4 a 6 libras por pie cuadrado en la Isla del Padre Sur. Efectos visuales. Los efectos visuales incluyen emisiones de luz durante la noche, particularmente cuando el cohete está en la plataforma de lanzamiento, así como la presencia visual de la infraestructura relacionada con el lanzamiento, incluyendo las torres de integración y la grúa, así como los cohetes. SpaceX necesitaría implementar una serie de medidas para minimizar los efectos visuales. Impactos en los recursos culturales. La acción propuesta tiene el potencial de afectar negativamente las propiedades históricas. Los posibles efectos pueden ser a causa de efectos visuales o auditivos o de vibraciones del suelo. La FAA ha encontrado un efecto adverso para las propiedades históricas y actualmente está llevando a cabo una consulta de la Sección 106 de la Ley de Preservación Histórica Nacional con el Oficial Estatal de Preservación Histórica, o SHIPO, y otras partes consultoras. Como parte de este proceso de consulta, la FAA y en consulta con el SHIPO y las partes consultoras modificará el acuerdo programático de la Sección 106. Todos los efectos adversos a las propiedades históricas se mitigarán a través del proceso de consulta de la Sección 106, incluido el desarrollo de un memorándum de acuerdo. Ley del Departamento de Transporte, Sección 4F. La acción propuesta no resultaría en una incorporación permanente de ninguna propiedad de la Sección 4F. Las actividades de lanzamiento propuestas por SpaceX tendrían impactos temporales e intermitentes en el acceso y la disponibilidad de algunas propiedades de la Sección 4F. Las propiedades de la Sección 4F experimentarían un aumento de los niveles de sonido durante las operaciones de lanzamiento. También existe la posibilidad de impactos causados por anomalías de lanzamiento. Algunos de estos impactos se mitigarían mediante consultas con los funcionarios que tienen jurisdicción sobre las propiedades 4F. La FAA ha hecho una determinación preliminar de que la acción propuesta no resultaría en más que un uso físico mínimo de cualquier propiedad 4F y no resultaría en un uso constructivo. Impactos en los recursos hídricos. La construcción propuesta por SpaceX resultaría en el relleno de aproximadamente 26 acres de llanura luvial y 17 acres de humedales. Los impactos al agua de los Estados Unidos, incluyendo los humedales, se mitigarán a través del proceso de permisos de SpaceX de la Sección 404 de la Ley de Agua Limpia. Impactos sobre los recursos biológicos. La FAA ha determinado que la acción propuesta afectaría negativamente a las especies incluidas en la lista bajo el hábitat crítico designado según la Ley Federal de Especies en Peligro de Extinción. La FAA presentó una evaluación biológica al Servicio de Peses y Vida Silvestre de los Estados Unidos y solicitó iniciar una consulta formal según la Sección 7 de la Ley de Especies en Peligro de Extinción. Los efectos adversos a las especies incluidas en la lista y al hábitat crítico se minimizarían durante el proceso de consulta de la Ley de Especies en Peligro de Extinción. La FAA no concluirá su proceso de NIPA hasta que el Servicio de Pesca y Vida Silvestre emita una opinión biológica. La FAA también está realizando consultas de la Sección 7 con el Servicio Nacional de Pesquerías Marinas, o NMFS, pero no espera que la acción propuesta tenga como resultado efectos adversos para las especies incluidas en la lista bajo el hábitat crítico de la jurisdicción del NMFS. El PEA final documentará los resultados de todas las consultas entre agencias. Impactos en el uso de la tierra. La acción propuesta es consistente con los usos de la tierra existentes en el sitio de lanzamiento de Boca Chica. Como se discutió anteriormente, la acción propuesta incluye 500 horas de cierres anavales relacionados con operaciones nominales y 300 horas de cierres anuales relacionados con anomalías. Las áreas de cierre se establecerían antes de las operaciones relacionadas con el lanzamiento y el condado de Cameron las publicaría. La FAA no es responsable de emitir cierres. Los recursos para obtener información adicional sobre el cierre se pueden encontrar en esta diapositiva, la línea directa, la página web del condado de Cameron, y para suscribirse a las actualizaciones de texto. Programa de participación de las partes interesadas y del PEA. Ahora que se ha proporcionado una descripción general del PEA, discutiré el calendario actual del PEA y cómo usted puede seguir involucrado. La FAA lleva a cabo la coordinación con las agencias estatales y federales durante la preparación del PEA en desarrollo. La FAA también ha incluido consultas con agencias de recursos federales como el Servicio de Pesca y Vida Silvestre de los Estados Unidos, Servicio Nacional de Pesca Marina, Comisión Histórica de Texas, y consulta de gobierno a gobierno con tribus nativas americanas. Actualmente estamos en el paso cuatro del programa PEA. El PEA se publicó el 17 de septiembre con un periodo inicial de comentarios de 30 días. La FAA recibió solicitudes para extender este periodo de comentarios y se concedió la prórroga. El día de hoy se lleva a cabo la audiencia pública del PEA en desarrollo y el periodo de comentarios públicos sobre el PEA en desarrollo se cerrará el 1 de noviembre. El siguiente paso es que la FAA publique el PEA final, que incorporará los comentarios del público recibidos en el PEA en desarrollo y anunciará un hallazgo sobre la acción propuesta, ya sea un hallazgo mitigado de impacto no significativo o un abuso de intención de preparar un informe ambiental debido a que uno o más impactos son significativos y no pueden mitigarse a niveles por debajo de su significancia. Comentarios sobre el PEA en desarrollo. Los comentarios sobre el PEA en desarrollo se pueden enviar por correo electrónico o por correo postal a las direcciones que aparecen en la diapositiva. Solicitamos que los comentarios se envíen a más tardar el lunes 1 de noviembre para garantizar que se tengan en cuenta en el desarrollo del PEA final. La FAA no puede garantizar los comentarios recibidos después del 1 de noviembre serían considerados en el desarrollo del PEA final. Antes de incluir información de identificación personal en su comentario, tenga en cuenta que su comentario completo puede hacerse público en cualquier momento. Usted puede pedirnos en su comentario que retengamos la publicación de su información de identificación personal, pero no podemos garantizarle que podamos hacerlo. El PEA en desarrollo y un formulario de comentarios públicos en blanco están disponibles en el sitio web del FAA en enlace previsto en la diapositiva. El sitio web del FAA también incluye un lugar para inscribirse en la lista de correo del proyecto. Los miembros registrados en la lista de correo recibirán actualizaciones del proyecto, incluyendo la notificación cuando la FAA publique el PEA final y el hallazgo del FAA. La parte restante de la reunión de esta noche está reservada para hacer comentarios orales. Jennifer les explicará el proceso.
Thank you for those English and Spanish presentations. We have now reached the second part of the online public hearing, a facilitated comment session. As a reminder, this online public hearing is being recorded, transcribed, and translated. I would like to call your attention to the globe at the bottom right of your Zoom screen. If you click on this icon, you can choose either English or Spanish to ensure you are listening to the hearing in your desired language. Shadir, would you please translate that in the English channel one more time?
En este momento quisiera señalar que hay...
En ese momento quisiera señalar que hay un ícono en la forma de globo terrestre, es el esquino inferior derecho. Si selecciona ese icono, usted podrá escoger el idioma español y así podrá escuchar la presentación en el idioma de su preferencia. Una traductor está presente en la sala en español de Zoom para traducir esta reunión y para asistirle con cualquier comentario o pregunta.
Thank you, Shadir. Ladies and gentlemen, we have over a hundred people who have indicated they would like to make an oral comment during pre-registration. I will call on you in the order in which you signed up. I will place the names of the commenters five at a time in the chat box. The first five names have already been placed in the chat box. Once I call your name, please raise your hand to identify you are ready to provide your oral comment and I will ask you to unmute. Each comment will have three minutes, each commenter will have three minutes to make their comments. At the start of your comments, please state your full name for the record. I will ask if others wish to make comments this evening as time allows. Again, we are not hosting a question-answer session this evening and any comments or questions posted in the chat feature will not be included as formal comments. Ladies and gentlemen, our first five speakers tonight are Cory Schuenberger, Molly Smith, Jenny Spicer, Becca Hinojosa, and Jean Gore. If you would please raise your hand so I can identify you and I will call on you. Cory, I see that you're on the Zoom. I'm going to ask you to unmute. Cory Schuenberger, I'm asking you to unmute so you can provide your oral comments. Okay Cory, I'll come back. Molly Smith, I see your hand. I may ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me?
I can. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
My name is Molly Smith and I'm a permanent resident of South Padre Island. I've read the PEA, including the appendices and the addendums to the 2014 EIS. Today, I'm asking you, that you, the FAA, and the other agencies that regulate public safety and are the guardians of our water, air, and environmental resources, conduct the analysis necessary to prepare a new EIS based on the new scope of SpaceX endeavor. The 2014 EIS, based on Falcon 9 Falcon Heavy, is not useful as it does not address major changes to the rockets and facility infrastructure. The Starship Super Heavy thrust is four times greater than Falcon 9 Falcon Heavy that was going to be tested at Boca Chica facility. And in fact, the increased number of launches and landings is already having a greater cumulative impacts on beach access in the surrounding ecosystem. In the January 2021 scoping hearings, one of the important public requests was that there be a launch failure analysis that would include impacts on the port of Brownsville, Port Isabel, SPI, and the only bridge to the island. This was not addressed in the PEA, nor was there any discussion of who would be responsible for emergency services in case of a launch failure. There needs to be a comprehensive response plan that includes the identification of parties responsible for actions and costs. This cannot be fully assessed without the complete EIS. According to the May 2020 written reevaluation, the FAA is authorized to grant launching licenses and experimental permits. It does not have regulatory authority over all of SpaceX's activities at Boca Chica. That includes, those include most of the construction of facilities such as the power plant, the natural gas pretreatment facility, and the desalination plant. These are not insignificant operations and indeed, concerns have been raised by the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service regarding changes to the scope of the project. In that May 2020 document and others, the concerns were downplayed or dismissed. It is clear that the FAA, that you, the FAA, should prepare an EIS. One would think that the FAA, in order to assure the public that it is following all of the appropriate protocols, would want to go with safety first and be in compliance with all NIPA guidelines. So I hope that you, the FAA, along with other federal agencies who exist to protect us and our resources, will act independently and complete an EIS on the new SpaceX project so that you can understand all the impacts and be able to act accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jenny Spicer. Jenny, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Jenny, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hello, I'm Jenny Spicer and I have been a member of the Brownsville community. I joined Brownsville in July. I came and checked it out in February and it wasn't as far as long as I was hoping and so we left and wandered about. My daughter and I then came and relocated here. Our life, we've been homeschooling for five years. I've been into space my whole life. So we're a type of local and I think it's important to designate that the gal that spoke before me is a different type of local than people like me that are going to be coming, following a dream. So we're going to need to make sure we have different aspects of what we consider like local feedback. I'm 100% a believer in being a multi-planetary species. While I've been here, the one thing I can tell you is a few of my experiences. This morning, I met a man. He had a falcon in his car. I was down there right by the Rio Grande. He had a falcon in his car. He said he caught four days ago at San Padre Island. So I found that. I investigated the libraries here. They need one in West Brownsville. Every day, I've never watched, I haven't been in Texas before, so I found some really interesting things just about Texas in general. I've watched about 200 trains in my backyard, all carrying oil and then also carrying wind power, big long wind mills coming from Mexico. And that's made me question the border. So I've had a chance to go to the border. I believe that's an experience everybody should have. There's things I've learned here. I swam to Mexico once. I've met tourists. It's been amazing. But one thing that's been a connection point for every single person is like this hope, this hope that there is something somewhere that is going to be able to rewire us as a culture. And I believe it is space. I believe I've tried to become the ultimate space fan in my time here at SpaceX. I've painted all kinds of stuff on the beach. I've watched it come right out of the dunes. But I believe that in order to solve for the dynamics of a multi-species preservation, which is what we are, we want to preserve all of Earth. If we want a multi-species preservation for the transition of this multi-species planet to birth a multi-planetary species, I don't want to leave Earth because we have to. I want to leave it in the art of exploring and discovering and I believe that's exactly what SpaceX is doing. In my time, I have seen such love, such care. I have seen beautiful partnerships. I love you SpaceX and, not to be understated, I love you Elon Musk too. And I believe that water collections and desalination plants are a passion and I believe this community would benefit very highly from these. Thank you so much. I love being in America. I've never flown so many flags. I feel more patriotic now than I think I have my whole life. I've never put so many American flags happily up for display. I love you, America and the world.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Rebecca Hinoshawa. Becca, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
My last name is pronounced Hinohosa and you should utilize your Spanish interpreter to actually pronounce the last names of people who live here locally. I live in Brownsville, Texas. I'm multi-generational from the Rio Grande Valley. And first and foremost, the Spanish translation and outreach by the FAA is a joke and in fact, is actually a violation of the Title VI Civil Rights Act, which organizations in the Rio Grande Valley have filed a complaint with the FAA's Office of Civil Rights. First of all, these slides for this presentation should have been translated into Spanish. It's not enough to just have audio. You also need to have Spanish text. A Spanish notice was only sent out three days before the hearing with only one Spanish email. The FAA did virtually no public outreach. There was no flyers. There was no meeting with stakeholders. There was no meeting with organizations. And at minimum, should have released Spanish notice 30 days in advance, just like English notice was posted 30 days in advance. Most if not all of the documents for the SpaceX permit were not translated into Spanish. That includes the like 300-plus document, the draft programmatic environmental assessment. So this is absolutely racist. This is language discrimination, discrimination against our community. SpaceX is frankly just another example of environmental racism of a big, massive billion-dollar company coming into an impoverished community, primarily people of color, indigenous people displacing locals. And you know, because of, well SpaceX has practically proven to be a bad neighbor, that tower that they were building, that wasn't even authorized by the FAA, the debris that's been blowing up into our communities, into wildlife refuges, is absolutely deplorable. And in fact, just goes to show that the size and scale of SpaceX should not be allowed to grow. The beach closures have already exceeded 1,200 hours a year. Boca Chica Beach was never for sale and it's absolutely deplorable that the beach has been closed as often as it has. And because of this, I'm asking that the FAA deny the permits for SpaceX. At minimum, there should be real Spanish outreach. There should be a comprehensive environmental impact statement, which should lead you to the same point, which is that SpaceX is a bad neighbor and should not be granted any permits to increase the size of their facility, which would include gas plants, drilling for gas, continuing to sever a wildlife corridor, continuing to be absolutely destructive to the Lower Rio Grande Valley Wildlife Refuge. And I'm absolutely disgusted with our local officials who have just been taking Elon Musk's money and not speaking up for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker this evening is Jean Gore, who I'm not seeing on the Zoom. Jean, if you're on, please raise your hand. The next five speakers are Sharon McGuire, Alan Guggenheim, Abid Masari, Dan Elton, and William Johnson. And again, I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name this evening. The next five speakers, if you would, please raise your hand and I will call on you to provide your comments. Abid, I see your hand is raised. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Thank you.
Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Sure. So I just want to start and say like, I know this is an emotional topic for other people. I just pray that in trying to gather these comments, we just express ourselves without hearing insults towards each other. As I mentioned before, that what is happening with SpaceX and Boca Chica is nothing that, which has never been done before. So we should just try to give SpaceX the chance. And in terms of the environmental concerns, I already see that SpaceX, for example, is offering 100 million for research into carbon capture. I still feel that it can also look towards into researching on how to reduce sound levels like the Helms resonators research, which has been done in Europe, which can reduce sound levels by 20 decibels or trying to invest in tuned dampers to reduce the vibration frequency of the rocket. Anything that would try to make it easier for the environment. But at the same time, I advocate for them getting this permit. Research, groundbreaking research should not be stored because there are issues which needs to be addressed. Still, the issues can be addressed, but they must not be delayed into reaching their goal. This will help even future generations to come. We might not be the ones who will be able to go to Mars or to the moon, but our children, our future generations should appreciate what we paid for them and we should not try to stifle development. That was my submission. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I do not see Sharon or Alan on the Zoom this evening. Dan Elton, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thanks. My name is Dan Elton and I appreciate the chance to speak. I think it's worth looking at the larger picture here and recognizing that we have a problem in this country with the NIPA regulation. And while that regulation was well-intended to protect the environment, it has really led to our inability to build. Since 2008, China has built more than 15,000 miles of high-speed rail. The US has built none. Our airports are crowded and inefficient. And this is all because when these environmental reviews are done, people ask for further review and then things get delayed and delayed and delayed. Now, if you look at the programmatic environmental assessment that SpaceX did, it is extremely thorough. It's 151 pages and 308 pages of appendices. But you know, it could be 1,000 pages long and you still have environmental coming to meetings like this complaining, right? Because that's what they do. That's their stick. But if you just look at this document, it goes into excruciating detail over every possible environmental impact. And we have to be honest, there are some environmental impacts, but I believe they are very small. So for instance, you know, there's going to be 11 acres that are going to be built up that will affect the piping clover habitat. But if you look at the total habitat of piping clover, that's just 0.15%. So you know, it's really not that big. Now, just a few other points real quickly about the beach. Elon Musk has actually said that they could build a tunnel from South Padre Island to the beach. So that would make it a lot easier for people to access during the road closures. I think Elon Musk and SpaceX are trying to be a really good neighbor to the community. And it amazes me how much vitriol there is for the company because they are providing a lot of jobs to locals. And honestly, if you look at most of the people there working those jobs, they are people of color. So I, you know, it's really mind-boggling to me that people would say SpaceX is bad for people of color. It's really surprising. But anyway, they've looked at sonic booms. They're going to land offshore. They've really looked at everything. So I think that this PEA should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next speaker is William Johnson, who let me know he's providing written comments. Our next five speakers are David Larson, Adam Chance, a registrant by the name of Common Sense, Geronimo Reyes, and Joshua Montgomery. If you would, please raise your hand so I can identify you. Common Sense, I see your hand is raised. I will ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, go ahead. Please state your full name for the record.
All right, I'm speaking on behalf of the Common Sense skeptic community. Our channel has released several videos with regards to past agreements made between Musk, the FAA, and the state of Texas. So today we'll speak to Musk's future plans for SpaceX, the declared plans that are not contained in this PEA. Here's what we know from Musk's news releases. Musk intends to use Boca Chica as his starbase of operations. Musk intends to colonize Mars using Starship, a ship incapable of bringing to orbit everything it requires for an interplanetary mission. Excuse me. Musk states every Starship will require 10 to 14 tanker launches to refill and call it 12 apiece. Musk intends to launch three crude vessels per day to queue in orbit while tankers refill them. So this paradigm requires 39 total launches every day. If Musk honors Texas state law and operates between seven and seven, that's one launch every 19 minutes or three launches per hour. The progressions of events would require landing 39 boosters and 36 tanker versions of Starship for a total of 75 landing events every day. If Musk honors state law, that's seven landings per hour. Relanding rockets was never addressed in the 2014 EIS. Every single event carries the inherent risk of explosion that accompanies rocket launches. Every single event carries the inherent risk of explosion that accompanies rocket launches. Using Musk's declaration, you're looking at a nonstop period of 10 events per hour, meaning that Highway 4 would be permanently closed to public use. This is not what SpaceX was granted permission for. They were granted one launch per month, seven to seven weekdays with advanced notice, not on weekdays or holidays. The rocket they're going to launch was supposed to be in a much smaller Falcon system. Musk did not launch what he promised they would launch. They were promised, they were given permission to build a launch complex similar to what SpaceX uses at Vandenberg, but Musk did not build what they promised they would build. So what the FAA, the EPA, and every other interest the party needs to look at is not this document. As destructive as this one is, you must look down the road to what the next step will look like. The one after that, the one after that, until Musk, in his declared quest to become the emperor of Mars, is launching 40 ships a day from this site with 80 landings every day of the year. The FAA told Musk what he was allowed to build at Boca Chica. He ignored you and did what he wanted. State of Texas told him to operate seven to seven on weekdays. He ignores them and does what he wants. County told Musk he had permission to block Highway 4 for a max of 300 hours per year. He ignores them and does what he wants. Presently, the FAA told us to stop building an unapproved launch tower. He ignores you and does what he wants. This will be your last chance to reel Musk in and hold him to account.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. If you allow him to double the launch pad, destroy more protected park space, build a pipeline to fuel a natural gas power plant meant for 100,000 homes in the middle of Boca Chica State Park, you will have destroyed a natural paradise for no other reason than a pander to a billionaire who has abused and ignored every single agreement he's ever made in Boca Chica. And the residents of that area, whether animal or human, deserve better than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I'm not seeing David Larson, Adam Chance, or Geronimo Reyes on the line this evening. So our next speaker is Joshua Montgomery. I see your hand. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Uh, good evening. My name is Joshua Montgomery and I run a company called Wicked Broadband. We're a competitor to SpaceX for rural broadband. And Starlink is going to probably adversely impact my rural business. Uh, other competitors in this space have clearly been doing outreach to local residents down in Boca Chica. And while the opposition to the project has made some impactful points, uh, the reality is that the, this is a not in my backyard situation. SpaceX's operations need to be on an eastern coast and as near to the equator as possible. There are a limited number of sites available and SpaceX chose this site based on location and not on its proximity to low income communities or to communities that have historically experienced racial discrimination. It's the location to the east and near the equator that makes this location ideal for this facility. No matter where this facility is built, it's gonna have some impact on the environment. SpaceX has committed to mitigate the impact and if I understand their statements on the matter correctly, have agreed to provide additional financial resources for mitigation in other areas. Historically, space launch facilities like the one at Cape Canaveral in Florida have been extremely good for local wildlife. The Space Coast is a refuge for large populations and I expect the impacts in Texas will be similar. I think that the FAA has a responsibility to our country uh to make facilities available for space launch that are appropriately located and uh with companies that are responsible. I think that this location is ideal for SpaceX's operation. And I think that facilities are important and despite the fact that this is gonna impact my personal bottom line, I would like to see the FAA move forward with the environmental studies as they've been provided and allow SpaceX to continue to launch from their Boca Chica facility. And I'll turn over the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next five speakers are Nate Argrows, Shahul Hamid, Christina, uh Jan Kowska, Darris Trunta, and Michelle Murray. Uh, Nate, I see you on the Zoom. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Cool. Thank you. Hi, my name is Nate Argrows. I'm representing myself. I'm in the process of becoming a Texas resident. I recently purchased a home in Texas and started a small business to support Starbase and I would not have done either of those things if it were not for SpaceX, obviously. Uh, the economic benefits of the Starship pro- project are numerous. Uh, more jobs, more club businesses, an increase in property values, more tourism money, and ultimately more money into education and schools. Many commenters have also touched on some of the environmental aspects, how reasonable space flight cuts down on waste, how Cape Canaveral already operates near a wildlife preserve that thrives as an endangered species refuge, and even how about how SpaceX employees helped save thousands of sea turtles earlier this year during the deep freeze. But I wanna talk about some of the more far reaching environmental impacts of this project. Investment in space technology has always spurred innovation. For every dollar invested in space, $10 is added to the GDP. Space research has given us camera phones, CAT scans, tennis shoes, and memory foam. And environmental research in particular is important to the space industry because in space, everything is resource constrained. Some of the first commercial solar panels ever produced were built for a satellite. If SpaceX can begin to achieve their goal of colonizing Mars, society will be forced to innovate in environmental research more quickly. We can't drill for oil on Mars, so we will have to figure out how to build more efficient solar panels for cheaper. We can't grow crops in Martian dirt, so we will have to make advancements in sustainable agriculture. And if we ever want to terraform the Martian atmosphere, we will have to solve carbon capture. Breakthroughs in any of these areas can immediately be applied back to efforts on Earth to support climate change mitigation, food production, and decarbonization. Even more importantly, the Mars missions would inspire generations of young scientists, engineers, artists, philosophers, and explorers in every country on Earth. It could be the singular event that unites the entire human race behind the same goal. An argument I keep hearing is why are we investing in space when we still have problems to fix on Earth? This is well intentioned, but it's not an either or scenario. The truth is that we must do both in order to survive. If you are an environmentalist who truly cares about fixing our planet, then supporting space travel is one of the most impactful things you can do. The Starship project underway at Boca Chica could be the most important project in the history of mankind. SpaceX has given America a massive head start in the new space race and they've given the whole world the hope of becoming a multiplanet species. I implore you to make the right choice and allow SpaceX to continue development of the Boca Chica spaceport unimpeded. I don't mean this lightly when I say that the future of humanity could rest on this decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm not seeing uh Shahul, Christina, or Darris on the Zoom this evening. Michelle Murray, I see your hand. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
My name is Michelle Murray and I speak for myself. I appreciate the opportunity to publicly voice my support for SpaceX to receive a launch license in Boca Chica for the Starship Super Heavy Launch Program. I've reviewed the draft PEA and I feel that using the 2014 Environmental Impact Study for the same facility as the basis for the EA was a sound choice. I am a longtime Texas resident. I lived in Port Isabel during the Starship launches last year and have recently bought a house in the area. The SpaceX activities at Boca Chica are the only reason my money and my time is being invested in the local economy. The economic impact from this project cannot be overstated. I have traveled extensively over the last 15 to 20 years, both in the United States and internationally. I can say unequivocally that the natural spaces in the United States are indeed a national treasure. However, I believe it is important to protect the environment in a way that allows us to work with nature cooperatively and still progress forward. I believe SpaceX's plans are in line with that goal. From the air, it is clear that their footprint in the wetlands is very limited and I have never been to the site without viewing abundant wildlife. After visiting the Cape Canaveral Launch Facilities, the limited size and scope of Boca Chica is even more astounding. The 500 hours of beach closures requested equates to only a bit over 5% of the hours in a year, which is minor. The noise from the launches or test firings, while impressive, is short-lived. And from South Padre or Port Isabel, it is similar to the regularly heard fireworks in the area. SpaceX has already demonstrated an eagerness to minimize environmental impact through their extensive use of solar panels and batteries for power and their plan to distill air locally to provide the needed liquid oxygen and nitrogen in a way that will drastically reduce both traffic and vehicle emissions from deliveries. SpaceX's quick action to help save sea turtles during the freeze last year is well documented and a real testament to their fundamental concern for the local community and environment. Working with local, state, and national agencies and SpaceX, I urge the FAA to issue a finding of no significant impact or mitigated significant impact for this environmental assessment and issue SpaceX an updated launch license as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ladies and gentlemen, I place the next five speakers in the chat. Jim Avera, Michael Riola, Gerald Black, Ed Griffith, and Maria Galasso. Uh, Jim, I see your hand. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Uh, thank you, Jim Avera. Last A V S and Victor E R A. Um, what SpaceX is attempting to achieve in Boca Chica is really a once in a lifetime step function. Um, America's continued leadership in space and our national security really depends on them being successful in this venture. As a speaker earlier mentioned, delays compounded on delays due to the review process is the big risk here. Um, I am very thankful that the FAA and the other agencies have this process for making sure that there is an appropriate protection of our environment and protecting both the environment and people from undue risk. But here's what I hope the FAA will keep in mind. If SpaceX runs out of money or runs out of motivation or runs out of elons before they get this done. And if that happens because of unavoidable administrative delays, it'll be the mistake of the century. So I hope the FAA will proactively do what it can both in its own self and in other, to help other agencies it's working with. Proactively look for ways to shorten the process, help SpaceX comply, and help them move forward as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Michael Riola, who I'm not seeing on the Zoom this evening. And then Gerald Black. Uh, Gerald, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, I urge approval of SpaceX's plan to conduct orbital launches of the Starship from the Boca Chica Launch Site without further delay. The Starship launches will follow an easterly trajectory that will avoid flying over land. The area near the launch site is sparsely populated. The launch site actually provides a useful human use for the area surrounding the launch site, thus keeping housing and businesses from covering the land the wildlife would be using. As typically happens during launch vehicle development, there may be some mishaps. However, the number of failures will rapidly diminish over time and will pose no significant threat to human life or to wildlife. The small threat to the environment pales in comparison to the gain accrued by development of the Starship. The Starship will provide a super heavy lift launch capability at an affordable price. It will provide a means to send humans back to the moon and onto Mars sooner and at lower cost than any other launch vehicle under development. Our national prestige will benefit by providing a leg up on the Chinese in the race to return to the moon and land humans on Mars. Expansion into space is also critical for the long term survival of the human species. For all these reasons, SpaceX's plans should be approved without further delay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Ed Griffin. Ed, I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Ed Griffin?
Yes.
Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Ed Griffith, G R I F F I T H. I'm speaking for the New Progressive Alliance. The New Progressive Alliance will address the three issues of safety, national security, and environmental impact. One, safety. SpaceX has almost 20 year record of innovation and reliability plus the extensive mitigation measures as described in table S dash four of the Programmatic Environmental Assessment. To maximize safety means this is a safe operation. Two, national security. We put humans on the moon over half a century ago. There is no guarantee we will forever maintain that lead. In the face of increasing international competition, SpaceX stands alone in reaching orbit not based upon decades old designs. We need to move beyond legacy space if we are to remain competitive. SpaceX's activities at Boca Chica are the best chance for the United States to maintain its position as a leader in space. Three, environmental impact. The New Progressive Alliance agrees with the FAA's S decimal five summary of environmental consequences. The New Progressive Alliance opposes the continual expansion of and giving huge subsidies to fossil fuel, not SpaceX operations which have a negligible impact on the environment. Conclusion. SpaceX has an almost 20 year record of safety, innovation, and reliability. The New Progressive Alliance urges the FAA to accept SpaceX construction and activities at Boca Chica. End of statement.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Maria Galasso. Maria? Okay, I saw Maria on the Zoom, but it appears that she's no longer on. Okay. One moment. Our next five speakers are Claudia Hernandez, Ludimvia Garcia, Ian Winarsky, uh, someone by, by the registered name of I Kapulitz, and Ellen Tymer. Uh, Claudia, I see you on the Zoom. I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Claudia Hernandez?
Yes, hi.
Hi, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Claudia Hernandez and I represent myself. I am a longtime resident and I wanna speak on myself and how this impacts my community. I have not lived here one year, five years, or 10 years. I have lived here my entire life. And it's disheartening how people believe that SpaceX is bringing bringing community um enrichment because it's not. They do not know the community. They don't know our language. And for them to think that money that Elon Musk and SpaceX is bringing will benefit us is mistaken. I do not believe that SpaceX should get the new approval for the launch uh proposal that they're asking for. Um, they're not considering us. My personal experience having to want to go to the beach and the road is always closed. Where they had promised that we would not be affected. I choose to live here. I am educated but choose to live in this community my entire life because the beauty that we have here, our environment, our people. Uh, our rents are getting higher here. The housing is getting higher. Um, the people that are being hired by SpaceX are not people from the community. Why? Cause not everybody speaks English here. Not everybody has a degree. And the ones that do decide to stay here for the environment are beaches. I can choose to go any beach and I'd rather be here in Boca Chica Beach. Um, I believe that if SpaceX continues to get approved a license for the ships, always does is hurt our environment, our pollution. Um, our animals can't speak for themselves, but I wish to defend them and their housing. Um, the fact that we could explore in the future is wishful thinking. But my thoughts are from my generation, my people here that choose to live here and choose to protect our and choose to protect our land, our community, from any more destruction that it already has. I do believe in building a better community. I do not believe money that SpaceX provides us will help us in the future in that sense. I believe that community more, will benefit more from the preserving our land, from preventing to be destructed by pollution. I just wish people would see that and respect our land and would think of us. And so the FAA would think of our community first than money.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Lud Divina Garcia. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello.
Hello. Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Ludina Garcia and I am a lifelong resident of the Rio Grande Valley. One of the fondest memories of my early childhood are the times we would go to South Padre Island. This is the mid 1960s. At that time, there were only three restaurants on the island, one hotel, and the pavilion where after frolicking in the Gulf waters, we'd go eat our sandwiches. And another of the fondest memories of my youth is the night of July 20th, 1969, when I saw on our black and white vacuum tube television, men walk on the moon. It is beyond my wildest imagination that 52 years later, a company founded by a man not yet born would choose the Rio Grande Valley of Texas to build a gateway to Mars. This has done tremendous positive things already for the Rio Grande Valley. We are on the map worldwide and what is happening here is being watched by people worldwide. SpaceX is the greatest private sector venture in the Rio Grande Valley in my eight decades of life here. I asked the FAA to permit them to do this first orbital launch and to take the steps necessary to make us a multi-planet species. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Ian Winarsky. Ian, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right. So hello, my name is Ian Winarsky and today I'd like to discuss the importance of starship and super heavy vehicles to our species as a whole. So to start this off, I'd like to discuss the environmental impacts of starship. Now, there is a lot of discussion over this. There is some skepticism. However, it is worth noting that as a result of SpaceX, the fuel of starship being methane, what actually happens is when that carbon dioxide deformed as methane is pulled out of the atmosphere, it is sent back in and then it is effectively reused, making the system carbon neutral. And even if it wasn't a carbon neutral system at all, say if the methane sent into the atmosphere and split into carbon dioxide and hydrogen wasn't recollected, it would still not have any significant effects on the overall carbon emissions of the globe. In fact, if you have dozens of starships launching every Earth Mars alignment as planned in the future when we have a sustainable colony on Mars, it won't, it won't even be 1% of the net global carbon emissions. In fact, it'll be one or even two orders of magnitude lower. But to go back to the overall significance of starship, there was no other significant vehicle that has been proposed yet and has seen significant funding that could be used to effectively colonize Mars. The plan for starship is to have 100 colonists per ship when the colonization efforts begin to send people to Mars and these starships will be used for decades. There are, have been other vehicles proposed to send people to Mars, but starship is the only one that can effectively colonize it. And to ensure the infinite survival of our species, we must colonize other worlds. And since Mars is the primary target in our solar system and the only reachable world in the near term, it is imperative that we colonize Mars to ensure the survival of our species for all time. And moving back to the environmental effects, once we have starships launching on Mars, the methane will be produced via the, into to resources upon Mars. And this will actually be very beneficial because it'll be a terraforming effort because it will release carbon dioxide and water vapor into the Martian atmosphere, which will therein create a thicker atmosphere, allowing the pressure to increase and for water to accumulate on the surface, which overall is very beneficial because eventually, after a certain amount of time, after the poles have been melted by solar mirrors and deploying of thermonuclear weapons upon them, the atmosphere will be thick enough to sustain liquid water and eventually for humans to walk about without wearing anything more than an oxygen mask. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. As a reminder, ladies and gentlemen, those that are with us this evening and pre-registered, if you join the Zoom under a different name, I'm not going to be able to identify you. So I do need you to send me a chat message if you have joined under a different name than you pre-registered. The other individuals in this group, I Capulet and Ellen Tymer, I'm not seeing on the Zoom this evening. So I'll move on to the next five pre-registered speakers, which are John Nahay, Victoria Guerra, Alexander Kornish Korsionovol, Evan Garcia, and Jared Stapley. Victoria, I see you on the line. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
There you go.
Victoria, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. I can't see that. Hold on. I can't see the timer. Okay, there we go. My name is Victoria Guerra. I'm a lawyer in South Texas and I'm a board member of the Friends of the Wildlife Corridor. As much as Mr. Musk wants exemption from NEPA regulations and processes, there is no such categorical exemption here. A finding will undoubtedly occur that SpaceX activities are likely to have significant impacts and full NEPA review will be required under 40 CFR 1501.3. Certain factors have to be considered in making this determination. One such factor is the determination of adverse effects on the affected areas listed species and designated critical habitat under the Endangered Species Act. Some of these endangered and threatened species include, but are not limited to northern aplamato falcon, the piping plover and its critical habitat, the red knot and its proposed critical habitat, the jaguarundi, the ocelot, the endangered and threatened sea turtles of at least five species. This area is also protected by Texas Parks and Wildlife and the National Historic Preservation Association. Another factor in considering significance under NEPA would be consideration of whether SpaceX activities violates federal and state law protecting the environment under 40 CFR 1501.3 B23. SpaceX activities result in violation of the National Wildlife Refuge for SpaceX's use of the refuge such as it serving as a debris field when the blast danger area and within the blast danger area and it being used for debris retrieval, which has destroyed refuge habitat in the past and would likely do so in the future. For members of the public to use a refuge, the service must engage in a compatibility determination to ensure that the activities are compatible with the refuge's purposes. Also, whenever a refuge is used for economic purposes, the service, meaning the Fish and Wildlife Service, must issue a special use permit for economic activities. From what I have gathered, Fish and Wildlife does not plan on doing a compatibility determination or a special use permit, nor has it done so in the past. However, even if it did, compatibility requirements in the Refuge Act are very strict and there is absolutely no credible way that SpaceX's activities could ever be deemed compatible with the purpose of the refuge. Also, the Refuge Improvement Act requires the service to administer the system to ensure that the biological integrity, diversity, and environmental health of the systems are maintained for benefits of present and future generations of America. However, largely due to the forced closure, the service has explicitly stated, due to operations by SpaceX, the service's ability to maintain the biological integrity, diversity, and environmental health of refuge resources has been significantly diminished at Boca Chica. The Act also requires the service to provide for conservation of fish, wildlife, and plants and space and the fish and wildlife is unable to do so. We would ask that a full environmental impact statement be conducted. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I'm not seeing John Nahay or Alexander on the call this evening. I do see an Evan. If that's Evan Garcia, please raise your hand to identify yourself. And I'm also not seeing Jared Stapley on the call this evening. I Capulet, I see your hand is raised. I will go ahead and call you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your full name for the record and you have three minutes.
I am E Capulet. I'm here representing myself. I strongly discourage the FAA from providing SpaceX any further permits and strongly encourage them to instead conduct a full environmental impact statement. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, just one moment. Okay, I've placed the next five speakers in the chat. Jim Chapman, Bill Berg, Michelle Beaker, Jeffrey Parker, and Patrick Belain. If you're on the Zoom, please raise your hand. Bill Berg, I see your hand is raised. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
I'll start, yes?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello, I am Bill Berg and a board member of Save RGV. In an interview during the starship testing period, Elon Musk answered an interviewer's question about the explosions, saying explosions are part of testing. And he would be surprised if there were no explosions. It is part of the design process. He is right. Except for that the testing should have been done with debris from an explosion would not damage the neighbors' properties, destroying habitats and wetlands where endangered animals live and feed, and then destroying those areas further with debris removal operations. The super heavy has 10 times the number of engines as a three-engine starship. What would be the result of an expected explosion as part of testing? There has been no launch failure analysis done for the super heavy. If it is impossible, if it is irresponsible to destroy wildlife and their habitat, it is a little crazy to have explosions of the as-yet untested most powerful rocket in the world a few miles from the cities of Port Isabel and South Padre Island. Testing could be done safely at Stennis Space Center in Mississippi. We may learn from testing that the super heavy is inappropriate for Boca Chica. An EA implies no significant impact. Indeed, the EA carefully avoids going deeply into such areas. In Section 3, for example, the EA mentions that 17 acres of wetland will be filled and covered with concrete, that a 250 megawatt natural gas fuel power plant will be built, a desalination facility will be built, a facility to produce liquid oxygen and liquid nitrogen from the air will be built, a natural gas purifier and methane liquefaction plant elsewhere called LNG plant will be built. This is a lot of infrastructure. None is new technology, but each separately is worthy of an EIS and together they scream for an EIS. Will there be a significant impact? We can't ask the endangered piping plovers. There were 41 nests counted there three years ago and only one nest found this year. The EA seems to choke over the concept of alternatives. Alternatively, electric power can come in.
Thirty seconds.
Alternatively, liquid methane for two launches a month can come to SpaceX by truck as it has for the last two years. Also, liquid nitrogen alternatively can come in by truck and clean water can come in by pipeline. The concept of no alternatives, which they keep saying, is childish. I want to thank you very much and ask you for an EIS FAA. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. It doesn't appear as so. Jim Chapman, Michelle Beaker, Jeffrey Parker, or Patrick Belain are on the call this evening. If you are on the Zoom, please raise your hand so I can identify you. Our next five speakers are Donna Hoffman, Triami Reddy Gangretti, Matthew Brown, Elwyn Cirrus, and Christian Larotelle. If you're on the Zoom, please raise your hand so I can identify you. Elwyn, I see your hand is raised. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Edwin Salas. I'm a graduate research assistant at the Massachusetts Institute of Technology. I am not speaking on behalf of my organization. The following comments are personal and results from my research over the past few years at MIT. So my work focuses on, on the one hand, on the development of methodologies to assess the environmental impact of launch vehicles. And on the other hand, on the optimization of launch vehicle designs for environmental performance. My comments will focus on the content of Chapter 3, Section 4 of the Draft PEA. This section addresses the expected impact on climate. I will focus on two points, given the short time allocated. First, the evaluation of the impact of launch emissions on climate. Second, the interpretation of this evaluation. First, the report states, I quote, GHG emissions are considered at all altitudes for a starship slash super heavy launch, unquote, but by calculating with CO2 equivalence, the total amount of GHG emissions at all altitudes, the report does not account for the difference between emissions made on the ground versus emissions made in the upper layers of the atmosphere. The impact of any specific combustion product is not identical in every layer of the atmosphere. Considering that the FAA has an obligation to independently evaluate the contents of the PEA, my question is, are there ongoing efforts inside the FAA or in agencies such as NOAA and NASA to develop dedicated methodologies to better assess the environmental impact of launch vehicles? Now, my second point, the report states, I quote, "The estimated CO2 emissions from annual operations of the starship slash super heavy program are significantly less than the total GHG emissions generated by the United States in 2018", unquote. This comparison has limited value for interpretation. So could the FAA propose a new benchmark to evaluate this impact? On a final note, I would like to add that as an aerospace engineer, I know what the development of starship means to the launch industry, to human exploration into science, that it will hopefully make space more accessible. So my comments aim at making sure that we know the big picture and anticipate on the environmental impact that launch vehicles will generate. Thank you, and I look forward to reading your answers.
Thank you for your comments. I'm not seeing Donna Hoffman, Triami Reddy, Matthew Brown, or Christian on the line this evening. If you are on, please raise your hand so I can identify you. We'll move on to the next five speakers, which are Theodore Pasalis, Austin Brothers, Owen Hill, Derek Pham, and James Miller. If you would, please raise your hand so I can identify you. Derek, I see your hand. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right. Thank you. Hello, my name is Derek Pham and I'm representing myself as a non-resident of Brownsville and the Boca Chica area. I am in support of SpaceX and their operations in the Boca Chica area under the pretense that allowing for them to proceed under the guidelines of the Draft PEA will benefit this area as well as will benefit this area as well as negatively affect it. However, the existing benefits of employing locals and the future benefits of a considerable economic growth will outweigh the negative effects. That doesn't mean that the environmental issues, including the existing wildlife and plants, among others, shouldn't be ignored, but rather should be confronted by both SpaceX and local, state, and federal agencies to where the environment shouldn't be too impacted by their operations. Regarding the sonic booms and the noises caused by SpaceX operations, they should be met with the consideration that the shaking of your chest is a positive thing, as SpaceX's operations not only inspire hope in so many across this nation and the world, but is propelling humanity on a course of togetherness and prosperity. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. I'm not seeing Theodore, Austin Brothers, Owen Hill, or James Miller on the Zoom this evening. If you're on, please raise your hand so I can identify you. I placed the next five names in the chat. Sharla Price, Ezekiel Overstreet, Joseph Dragone, Diane Umpary, and Andrew Delta Bluefire. If you would, please raise your hand. Ezekiel, I see your hand is raised. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Ezekiel Overstreet. I am a Texas resident. Now we representing myself today. So, Starship Superheavy are run by SpaceX. SpaceX is one of the safest rocket companies that exists. They have the Falcon 9, which has sent multiple humans to the International Space Station, and they just sent for regular citizens. If they were not safe, they would not be able to do things like that. They have proven that by testing, that Starship will be a safe vehicle. If they do not test, then it will be far more dangerous than just stacking it up and launching when doing zero tests at all. That would be far more dangerous. My second point would be that SpaceX is actually helping the Brownsville community far more than they are damaging it. They have, Elon Musk and SpaceX have donated over $20 million to the school system and water supply. They have donated over $10 million to the county. There are thousands of tourists all around the world coming to see just these rockets, which is bringing even millions of more dollars. Actually, let me go back, 20 million to the school, yes. They have also brought jobs there. SpaceX is set to bring over 5,000 jobs to Brownsville from employees being there, which is bringing in millions and millions of dollars to the community, which will help raise it, help fund different things, which will overall benefit everyone there. My third point would be about the impact that Starship will have on the environment. So, the Starship Superheavy system, we have the Superheavy and then second stage of Starship. Starship is burning CH4, methane, carbon, hydrogen, and liquid oxygen. So, when we mix these together and it burns, it's bringing pretty much H-carbonated H2O, which is practically like gaseous sparkling water, pretty much. And about the power plants and the other systems, they're expanding their solar farm, not only that, and they're working on a machine that will suck carbon, hydrogen, oxygen out of the air, so you don't need oil and other wells. So, Starship is not only going to be very safe, it is also helping the community, SpaceX. Not only that, they are bringing-
Thirty seconds.
-jobs, and they're doing everything in their power to make it safe, work with the community, support it, and they're doing everything right without they should be. Starship, and I think that the FAA should grant Starship their license to launch the Starship Superheavy system. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Diana, I see your hand is raised. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. My name is Sadiana Umpieri. I am not in Texas. I have lived in Florida for over 20 years. I am very passionate about astronomy and space exploration all my life. It in fact inspired me to go to college, to Cornell, where I even got to do an internship for NASA. I've witnessed myself three space shuttle launches, and just last Friday, I got to see the Lucy mission go up. So I get the excitement. I have no problem with, you know, that part of it. But I'm also a geologist. I'm an earth scientist. And I have also seen and witnessed myself here in Florida the incredible amount of ecological damage that has been done by the space race. And I fear the same things for the Boca Chica area, which is why I'm commenting, because I really fully believe that a full-blown EIS needs to be done. And it needs to not only make sure that it has truly meaningful public participation, which has been an issue, but it has to full range of analysis of all the different impacts. And just to give an example, right here in Florida, SpaceX has launched 29 different missions to launch Starlink satellites. Right now, they have launched a total of like about 1,600 satellites in the last two years. And in the last two years, we have also witnessed realized an incredible amount of damage that is happening to astronomy, to the very science that inspires us to go to space. It is very clear that NIPA is failing us. NIPA is not taking into account the full range of impacts that come with space exploration. I certainly, you know, all for, you know, making sure that at some point we make it to Mars, but we don't have an urgency to go to Mars. We have an urgency to take care of our climate crisis and our biodiversity, and to make sure that we don't keep on doing the exact same thing that we did when Europeans came to America. You know, and so I implore you to please make sure that you do the right thing and do a full-blown. Yeah, yes, I will-
Thirty seconds.
I will drop in the links, some links on some of the damage that is happening from the SpaceX Starlink satellite. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm not seeing Sharla Price, Joseph Dragone, or Andrew Delta Bluefire on the line this evening. If you are, please raise your hand so I can identify you. Andrew, I see you as Andrew Chapman. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm here in support of the SpaceX Starship program, as I believe it presents a unique opportunity for Texas. We haven't had an opportunity with a rocket of this payload capacity since the Shuttle. And since the Shuttle has ended, we've seen our reliance on Russia increase. Starship hasn't proven itself to contribute too much to the environment as it burns clean. I feel the FAA should give the launch authorization to Starship. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next five speakers are Jack Sweeney, David Bass, Aiden Gurliya, Daniel Smith, and McGuire Wood. If you would, please raise your hand so I can identify you. David, I see your hand raised. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right. Hello, I'm David Bass. That's D-A-V-I-D, D-A-S-S. I'd like to thank the FAA for giving me this chance to comment. I am not a Brownsville resident, though I did live in San Antonio for a period due to my work, so I am representing myself here. While there are undeniable effects such as noise, traffic closures, and risk crashes and explosions that affect the area, I believe the benefits both in terms of economic growth and the offerings to the US taxpayers in terms of the capabilities of a reusable Superheavy launch system provides outweighs the risk of allowing SpaceX to continue with its operations. Excuse me. For example, Cape Canaveral has conducted launch operations for decades without adverse environmental issues. The area is in fact a thriving wildlife refuge due to the clearance zone keeping development away. The reusable rocket system will also be able to keep us from just jettisoning rocket stages into the ocean, which has environmental benefits. The current environmental assessment largely bears these facts out, and I'm fully satisfied with it and do not think an environmental impact study is needed. My only environmental concerns are with the cleanup of any soil after an explosion, because they do seem to occur, and with the large amount of methane used to fuel the rocket. This is unavoidable, given the size of the rocket, though perhaps a reform of the Jones Act while outside the scope of this review could make it so shipping the gas in would be viable over trucking it in, reducing impacts on the roads and the environment from all those trucks. Regardless, I trust that the FAA and relevant federal and state agencies will ensure adequate safety and environmental protection measures, but it's also something they should still keep an eye on. So, I provide my support to the approval of SpaceX's operations in the Boca Chica area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Aiden Gurliya, I see your hand is raised. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, this is Aiden?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
So my name is Aiden Gurliya, and I am representing myself. Here in Boca Chica, we have a vehicle, Starship, that is capable of taking people to Mars and outer space, and it's already built, and they're in the completion stages to make it actually work. I stand with SpaceX, and I want them to have full approval to do as many launches as they need to make this system actually work. I do not believe they should be limited to a certain amount. They should be able to do as many launches as they need to, because we have not seen any environmental impact so far in any other launch facility in the United States or around the world. If there is such a bad environmental impact here, maybe Kennedy Space Center should have an environmental investigation as well. As we see, space centers can work together with environmental organizations to have a safe environment for both plants and animals and rocket launches. I stand with SpaceX to have this approved, and the USA to keep the lead in the space race. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna see if we have anyone else within this current list of five people on the line, and then we will be taking a short break to give a rest to our court reporter and our translator this evening. I'm not seeing Jack Sweeney on the line. Daniel Smith, I see someone as Daniel S. If this is Daniel Smith, please raise your hand so I can identify you. And McGuire Wood, I am not seeing on the line. Dan Smith, I'll go ahead and ask you to unmute.
Hi. My name is Dan Smith. I examined the Starbase facility. I don't live in the area. I live in Illinois, but I've been watching this project develop over the last several years. And having examined the Starbase facility from the highway down there twice, and I've gone through the environmental impact statement that was put out, or at least the review draft, it seems like they're doing all the due diligence that they really can to eliminate and mitigate all the environmental factors that the Starbase facility could pose to a larger area. I fully support their effort to design, build, and launch the Starship Superheavy orbital system. I'd also like to add that while protecting the environment is very important to everybody and to our children, and maintaining that beautiful area down there is a very important thing. I think you have to really consider the impact to the local economy and also the impacts it could have to national defense. In the future, the Starship program has many different possibilities in the future. And we are in a global race with other large nations like China, and we can't fall behind in that. So I think the FAA should recognize that this is a reality and get behind what SpaceX is trying to do, and should further their ventures in space in Boca Chica and Starbase. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Ladies and gentlemen, we will be taking a five-minute break. When we come back, the next five speakers are Isis Valencia, Nicholas Andrich, Michael Paul, Samuel Bowman, and Patrick Ambly. We will take a break and return at 7:10 Central Time. Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome back. Mary and Pamela, will you please come off of mute and let me know that you are back and ready?
Ready.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we will continue with hearing public comments. Our next five speakers are Isis Valencia, Nicholas Andrich, Michael Paul, Samuel Bowman, and Patrick- Our next five speakers are ISIS Valencia, Nicholas Andrich, Michael Paul, Samuel Bowman and Patrick Ambly. Nicholas, I see you on the line. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Andrich. I live in California. But I've been following SpaceX and their starship projects and StarHopper launched in 2019. I hope to visit sometime soon and I'm here today to support the launch license. People are talking about how much SpaceX harms the community. This rocket and company have created so many things that help support the community. They have renewed an interest in spaceflight and are inspiring new generations of engineers and astronauts. Birds and turtles were harmed during the freeze that happened eight months ago to help the to help the community. And the animals SpaceX helped save many turtles in the area. They also provided a generator to Sea Turtle Inc., which helps rehabilitate and save turtles in the local area. SpaceX has created hundreds, if not thousands of jobs in the local area, created another tourist destination for the area. And has helped start a part of social media dedicated to SpaceX and Boca Chica. I hear people talking about how SpaceX closing the roads and beaches are unconstitutional. But the fact is that SpaceX was granted an exemption exemption to the constitution, which allows them to close the roads and beaches. There are millions of people in online communities such as LabPadre, NASA Spaceflight and Everyday Astronaut. And these communities are fueled by SpaceX and this project and help educate many people on the projects going on currently. Once Starship achieves its current dream of operations, this place will be on the map forever as the birthplace of the rocket that brought you into Mars. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Michael Paul, I see your hand is raised. I'm going to ask you to unmute. Michael Paul?
Am I live?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Sure, thank you. My name is Michael Paul, also known as Bocus Brain on Twitter. Happy Street Talking Points. First of all, I approve the process and hope that the draft program environmental assessment. Is approved, leading to a Fonzie finding of no significant impact. SpaceX is the best thing that's happened at Brownsville. I am not a native. I travel there frequently. With over seventeen hundred employees and eighty million in annual payroll, which previously didn't exist. This does not include truckers. Trucking establishment, cement plants, all the other downstream employees that are also getting compensated when they may have been idle otherwise. Road closures are about to be mitigated by turn offs. So the amount of road closure should diminish when SpaceX is moving large items. I'd also like to address the environmental issue briefly. There is no such thing as environmental racism. That is a manufactured wokeism. If locals really cared about the beach, they would clean it up because the last time I was there on a Monday morning, I filled up the back of my pickup truck. In three hundred feet of the beach, not six miles, three hundred feet. Locals don't really care about their beach. They just want it because they're petulant and childish. They want what they want without any consequences. Finally, I'd like to give a shout out to all the great space reporters that have been there from day one. Maria Poyner, Boca Chica gal, Luis Valderras Jr., La Padre, Mauricio Adolano, RGV Ariel, John Randolph, Carlos Nunez. Austin Barnard, Alex Valderras, Starship Gazer, Tim Dodd, Marcus House, Felix. And Jessica Tetrow in the local city of Brownsville and her stewardship has helped greatly in the efforts. And finally, Sam Patel, the boss at Starbase, thanks for all you're doing and Elon Musk for bringing this to fruition. I can't emphasize enough that a Fonzie determination is what is warranted. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Samuel Bowman, I see your hand is raised. I'm going to ask you to unmute. Samuel, are you there?
Yeah.
Samuel, are you there?
Let's see.
Samuel, we can hear you. You have three minutes.
Oh, okay. I can hear you. Hello, I'm Samuel Bowman. I'm from Michigan. But I hope to visit Starbase soon. I've been working there. I do not represent a group organization. The first point I would like to address are the comments made on the noise created from stack fires and launches. South Padre Island already has regular firework shows. Do those not produce similar or higher amounts of noise on the island? A resident of South Padre Island is planning on conducting a experiment to find out. I will not be surprised if the fireworks are as loud or louder than Starship. The second point I would like to address are the comments made on the effects to the environments. Several people point out Cape Canaveral is an example of how wildlife and rockets can live together. However, I would like to provide a different example. Wallops Island. Similarly to Boca Chica, Wallops was originally a tourist destination and had an area of it privately owned. Then the Air Force eventually NASA moved into test rockets. What effects did this have on the wildlife? Wallops turned into a wildlife refuge. Before becoming a test range, animals like sheep and cow grazed on the land. But now it houses threatened species like the piping plover. Rockets still launch from Wallops and they still sometimes explode, as you can see on YouTube. But the wildlife still thrives. I believe Starbase can have a similar effect. By partially restricting the public's access to the area, it can help wildlife by reducing the number of people visiting the area. SpaceX is bound by parameters laid out in an environmental assessment. Tourists are not. The third point I'd like to address are comments that claim Starbase will reduce tourism on South Padre Island. This is simply untrue. You need not look further than Cocoa and Titusville near Cape Canaveral. They had decades of chatosonic booms, yet they were and still continue to be a popular tourist destination. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Patrick Ambly, I see your hand is raised. I'm asking you to unmute.
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, hello. I care for the environment and I believe that and while Starship is a incredibly massive rocket. I had many concerns watching this program develop with how close it appeared. The rocket will be launching to from South Padre Island. However, upon reading the environmental assessment, the PEA. And the two thousand first fourteen EIS, I am, all my fears and concerns were actually removed. I am incredibly impressed by the due diligence that SpaceX has shown. Putting together these documents and laying out plans of how they will protect the environment and how they will mitigate impact on the local population. I also am. Think that the presence of SpaceX can actually be a net positive to the local area, as many had pointed out. Kennedy Space Center is a great example of how rockets can actually improve the local environment. The. Many invasive species actually live and actually thrive in Kennedy Space Center due to the rockets preventing local development. And if SpaceX hadn't moved into Boca Chica, I'm concerned that another organization who is less regulated could also. Go develop the same land that SpaceX has bought and. Could develop the area internally and and create a greater environmental impact. However, now with SpaceX living in this area, their presence will prevent and more development and keep the area. Better protected than potentially other beings could. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next five speakers are David Wertz, Alex Valderras, Josh Green, David Lefranier and Donald Monroe. Alex, I see your hand raised. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right. Thank you. My name is Alex Valderras. I'm a local from San Diego, Texas. Forty-five minutes away from Boca Chica and I've visited many times there. It's amazing progress out there. I want to say, I understand the high level of opposition last hearing and hearing the concerns they said. But I believe SpaceX as well as other participating agencies can work together and avoid the EIS. I am in full support of the SpaceX Starship Super Heavy Project at Boca Chica, Texas. Recently, on October sixteenth, there was a thank you event out there. About four hundred students were there to say it. That made me believe this needs to happen. It would get students' interest in SpaceX. Right now, there are local photographers, twenty-four seven live streamers that watch NASA Spaceflight. And aerial photography, RGB photography documenting everything. We don't need to lose that because SpaceX is being kept an eye on at all times. The photographers, streamers make a living off of all this and I've met some wonderful people interested in this development. Furthermore, this project will bring some jobs, massive media attention to get us back on the map. Tourism as well and hopefully have businesses brought down here from other locations. As a local, personally, we don't need to be known as just a border town, the poorest place in Texas. And have the lowest economic growth down here. We need this. Finally, SpaceX has already built its first orbital starship super heavy rocket. And they're already making more very fast. Elon Musk knew not only is this his own launch site, he knew from the start, South Texas would launch. The world's most powerful rocket to the moon, Mars and beyond. I ask you, the FAA, please approve this project and its launch license to proceed this life-changing moment for us and spaceflight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ladies and gentlemen, a couple administrative announcements. For those that have asked what speaker number they are. Just for your reference, Alex was speaker number sixty-eight this evening. Again, we do have some no-shows, but that should give you an idea of where you fall in terms of timing. Also, please note that official comments cannot be accepted using the chat feed. Please email your questions and comments to spacexbocachica@icf.com. Our next speaker is Josh Green. Josh, I see your hand is raised. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
My name is Josh Green. I'd first like to disclose that I am not from the surrounding area of Brownsville and I represent myself and all opinions are of my own. I'd also like to thank the FAA for laying the opportunity of public comment and opinion. I'm very interested in the topic of aerospace engineering and the progression of technology and I fully understand environmental concerns of local residents. So in my opinion, I believe that the FAA should move to issue an experimental launch permit for the operation of Starship and Super Heavy from Boca Chica. I believe that the permit should be expedited and issued due to the nature of Starship and Super Heavy pertains to national security and the Artemis Moon Program. I also believe that SpaceX has shown the capabilities of Starship and have finally shown rapid innovation. Iterations have shown and proved that selecting Starship for the NASA human landing system is justified and has certain potential to show results. Super Heavy is also a cheap cost effective super heavy launch vehicle that is sure to provide cost effective capability for the United States Air Force, National Reconnaissance Office and other governmental departments. Attending to the environment, I believe Boca Chica, Kennedy Space Center and Cape Canaveral Space Force Station share a lot of common. All are built upon marsh or wetlands. Launches have been occurring from Kennedy Space Center and Cape Canaveral Space Force Station for the past fifty years. And is home to the Merritt Island National Wildlife Refuge, which is home to over fifteen hundred different species of birds, fish and plants, twenty-one of which are endangered species. During these fifty years, thousands of launches have been conducted from these two locations in Florida and has maintained its reserve status. There have been no major environmental impacts noted from these launches. I believe that proposed power plant should be further investigated due to its large nature and the required infrastructure and its continuous operating hours. I also believe that the investigation should be conducted regarding the air quality and the six pollutants outlined by the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. Using centralized location of testing and ongoing lengthy period of time SpaceX will be conducting launch operations at Boca Chica. So I believe that the monitoring of the air quality should happen as much as this result. I also believe that investigation should be conducted regarding the impact of sound on the residents at Port Elizabeth and South Padre Island as they were within eight kilometers. Finally, I do believe that the FAA should undertake a small scale expedited version of an environmental assessment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I am not seeing David Wertz or David Lefranier on the call. So Donald Monroe, you're our next speaker. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Donald Monroe. Thank you FAA for providing this opportunity for members of the public like myself to comment. I do not represent any group. I am independent. I believe SpaceX can proceed with their Starship Super Heavy operations and the environment can flourish at the same time. I do not live in or near Boca Chica, but I've visited South Padre Island for SpaceX SN-ten flight. And also Kennedy Space Center at Cape Canaveral, Florida for two Falcon nine missions. Full launch sites, build sites, propellant plants and all other required infrastructure that goes along with them. Are incredibly small relative to the surrounding sensitive protected area. My main point is launch operations have been in Cape Canaveral, Florida and arguably more risky areas for decades. While the environment, wildlife and public has prospered and flourished in that area. This wildlife referred to at Cape Canaveral also includes endangered wildlife and protected areas. That environmental groups and skeptics whine and worry about at the SpaceX Texas Launch Site. In fact, NASA tour guides brag about endangered wildlife on Kennedy Space Center tours. I believe Boca Chica and its surrounding environment can flourish with SpaceX Starship operations as well. SpaceX has already shown such kindness towards wildlife, the most notable example. Being lending wildlife centers generators during the Texas freezes earlier this year. Additionally, the Starship system benefits the environment long term through its end goal of being fully reusable. Many rockets, both past and present, are fully or partially thrown away after one flight. Much more waste and destruction than a few bangs and booms during past and future testing at SpaceX's Texas. Texas Launch Site. This waste not only affects the environment on Earth, but contributes to space debris with stunted life. Orbiting satellites and our access to space. Therefore, developing a fully and rapidly reusable vehicle capable of traveling to Earth orbit, the moon, Mars and beyond, successful or not, is worth it. The technological and scientific advancements that have come from spaceflight have changed the world. The benefits outweigh the risks. The last notable thing I'd like to mention is SpaceX is the only US launch provider capable of getting humans to low Earth orbit. The United States must stay in the lead in our presence in space. Long drawn out documentation and discussion is not healthy. We need the same enthusiasm, innovation and courage to explore as those had in the Saturn, for the Saturn V and the Apollo days. We, the United States, always talk about it. This SpaceX Starship project is it. Let's get to Mars, do it safely. We can do that. We've done it in Cape Canaveral. I urge the FAA to allow SpaceX to proceed with this Starship Super Heavy project in Boca Chica.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, our next five speakers are Robert Smith, Blake Donahue, Ethan Maseo, Sheng Chen. And Yong Sei. Robert, I see your hand is raised. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you for your time. I'm not going to slaughter everybody with a bunch of data as most of you have already thrown it out there and know that. There's a large percentage of pros and cons to this, but I am definitely for SpaceX. I've worked very delicately in some of these very delicate. Wetlands personally, and I know how delicate.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you for your time. I'm not gonna slaughter everybody with a bunch of data as most of you have already thrown it out there and know that there's a, a, a large percentage of pros and cons to this, but I am definitely for SpaceX. I've worked very delicately in some of these very delicate wetlands personally, and I know how delicate they can be. And I will tell you now that working with the Army Corps and the EPA and local and state and the fish and wildlife, these people know what they're doing. Uh, I believe that it's so long as SpaceX works with them, we shouldn't have any issues as, as far as environmental issues. You know, we, we've got enough regulations out there. I, I come from the Cleveland area, so I know a little bit about the EPA because it's where it was born, from a river that had caught on fire. So, you know, we've come a long ways, but we can also go too far. We need to push this project forward as, as well as we can and as safely as we can. But we need to trust the, the bodies and programs that we have in place. That being said, I don't believe that SpaceX is, is trying to pull the wool over anyone's eyes. For God's sakes, they put cameras in places where, where nobody else would have. They've, they've opened their doors and windows so that we could see everything that they're doing, when they're doing it, while they're doing it. No company has ever done that for us. We are seeing history unfold right before our eyes, and we have the ability to, to, to have a voice in, in what's happening. And for Elon to, to allow us into that world, he should be commended, not ridiculed. He has worked with us a, as far as the environment goes. He's, he's, he, he's not trying to hide anything. A, and it's been made apparent, you know, uh, every time something needed to be done, he's addressed it. So, you know, we, we don't need to be executioners here. We, we need to, to, to be there to help. Change comes hard for anybody. So, you know, we need to accept that change because we know that there's no stopping progress. And anyone that tries to stop progress
Thirty seconds.
Leaves a path of waste, haste, and regrets. And that's all I have to say. And I will tell you this, if it wasn't for the, the online community like Louis Lab Padre and Maria and, and all them, we wouldn't have those windows in, into, into that world. So, thank you once again for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Sheng Chen. I'm gonna ask you to unmute. And again, my apologies if I mispronounced your name this evening.
Hey, um, yeah, you, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, so I'm Sheng Chen, um, and I'm not representing any group or organization. So we know that everything has two sides, and we need to carefully evaluate the benefits and the risks. And I can see the foreign benefits of allowing SpaceX to move forward to test and launch Starships. The first Starship represents the most advanced space technologies that the US have in terms of the size, the capacity, the capability, the efficiency, and the cost of launching services. SpaceX helps the US to maintain its technological advantages in space in the world, which helps the US to maintain the national security. So the FAA could keep the SpaceX waiting, but the rest of the world is not awaiting. They are not constrained by FAA and other regulations. We can see other, other countries are quickly catching up. And another thing that Starship is, is inspiring the whole new generation. We know that the kid in the US significantly fall behind in the math and the science performance compared to those in other countries. I think Starship is really a chance to inspire the whole generation to get engaged in math, science, and physics, the foundation of the future of a nation. I have constantly heard people say that they want to build the US back stronger and so forth. But my question is, if we don't have a generation with solid STEM education, how could that happen? And there are of, of course, some concerns. One concern is that the launching could endanger wildlife, animals. But there are evidence that launching site actually helps wildlife to flourishes, such as the Kennedy Space Center in Florida. It is also worth noting that wild animals are very adaptive, in particularly if the environment is changing gradually. I don't see SpaceX and the Starship will incur as a sudden change to the environment. Overall, I can see numerous positive impacts of Starship with strong evidence. Those are the concerns to the
Thirty seconds.
Is la, is largely speculation without proof or evidence. Environment is very adaptive, but the US's best technology is not. People can make an argument that protect the environment will benefit the next generation, but to which degree, if the US fails behind in space in technologies. And we know that was significantly hurt the benefits of the next generation. And I'm sure that that will
That's time. Thank you for your comments. I don't see Robert Smith on the call this evening. Blake Donahue, I see a Blake. If you're Blake Donahue, please raise your hand so I can identify you. Um, Ethan, I, he see your hand is raised. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Uh, hello and good evening. My name is Ethan Maseo. I am a high school senior and a lifelong resident of Brownsville, Texas. I have had the opportunity to drive out SpaceX multiple times, and I even had the opportunity to participate in an onsite tour of the facility provided by my school. Uh, I think it is important that I'm not seen as just a kid. I am ranked top in my class, number seventeen out of school, seven hundred seventy-seven. So I just hope what I have to say is taken with some weight. I'm fortunate that in twenty fourteen, SpaceX began using the Boca Chica site for producing and testing the then Star Hopper and now Starship Super Heavy System. SpaceX in Boca Chica is bringing many positives to the area. Uh, specifically, I would like to address how it is inspiring the lives of my generation and of kids my age. I am not the only student who has been inspired by these projects, and I am one of many who have had the future of my life altered because of the work done at SpaceX. I know that I, I go with friends all the time to SpaceX, to Boca Chica, and we stare at rockets all day because it is what we love to do. It is what we're passionate about and what we plan our future to be. We all want to be aerospace engineers, and we thank you, Elon. We thank you, SpaceX, and we thank you to the NASA Space Flight, Tim Dodd, the Everyday Astronaut, Lab Padre, and the countless other reporters who have inspired us through space and all the curiosities that we share. To the FAA, I thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I hope you, we realize together that it's time to move forward. It is time for life to become a multi-planetary species. And we just ask that you give SpaceX the licenses and the rights and the permission to continue with their orbital flights. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Yong Sei. Yong, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Um, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Um, I'm Yong Sei. I am a secondary school student in Malaysia, and I'm now gonna talk about my personal feelings on the matter. Going up, I watch anime like Steins Gate, Ashra Lost its Space, and movies like Star Wars and Back to the Future. These sci-fi shows
Yong.
Your career in science.
Yong, are you, I apologize for interrupting, but I need you to slow down for the court reporter.
Uh, okay.
Thank you.
But the term science is pretty broad. Um, I had many things I wanted to do, but not many things I had confidence. Um, I had the ability to see true. But now SpaceX is, what SpaceX has been doing and is doing has given me a glimmer of hope to be able to see a bit of what I want to do as my dream, you know? To me, as an outsider, like not in America, it doesn't matter as to where space advances from. All I want to see are space of, uh, fleets or spaceships soaring through space colonies of humans living on different planets and magical materials from space that can do almost anything. Though, before I, before I, before anyone can see this, our technology has to advance, and to do that, test has to be undergone. People concerned about the environment, the problems caused by the rockets, I do not think you are thinking far enough. If we could attain resources and produce stuff away from Earth, then Earth could be polluted less by factories, oil rigs and mines. The faster rapid development of reusable rockets become a thing, the faster we can gain these benefits. As I said, I'm a Malaysian. I couldn't care less who or which place space travel gets developed. From all I want to see is when, from a purely curious standpoint, I want to see this advancements happens within my lifetime. Thus, I urge the FAA to allow SpaceX to do the things they do. And from my observations, SpaceX seems to be the fastest and most surefire option we currently have. I'm not gonna talk about a story called Yu Gong Yu Sa. It's a Chinese story about, um, which means a stupid old man moves a mountain. There was once an old man in China. He lived in a village far within the mountains. The village there had to go, the villagers there had to go up and down mountains to reach the capital to study, sell, and buy things. One day, he decided to start digging a tunnel through the mountains by himself. While digging, a villager came to him and laughed at him, saying that he will never be able to finish or use the tunnel in his lifetime. But instead of getting this discouraged, he said that although he may not be able to finish and use this tunnel in his lifetime, his next generation and the following generations to come will be able to continue this tunnel. And one day in the future, the generation in the future will finish this and use this tunnel. The mountain got hurt this and was touched. He then decided to move the entire mountain for him. Though this is a fictional story, there has been a real story of a man in China who spent thirty-six years to take a ten km long hole through a mountains. These things are not impossible. I just switch from fossil fuels to renewable energy. Space travel is something that requires large expenses. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the next five speakers are Nathan Darsh, Mehmed Ashalan, Nor Mohammed, Oliver Large, and Frederick Merkel. If you're on the line, please raise your hand. Nathan, I see your hand is raised. Ask you to unmute. Is this Nathan Darsh?
Hello, good evening.
Yes, this is Nathan Darsh.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes.
The relatively recent introduction of SpaceX into the space industry has dramatically reduced the cost of transportation of technology to space and increased the frequency and availability of transport to space. SpaceX's recent development in Boca Chica will further improve, increase, and reduce the cost of human, the human race's ability to introduce planet-saving technologies the form of, in the form of satellites with the ability to track and prioritize human efforts to save our planet from the influence of human activity and preserve our planet while seeking the opportunity to preserve our planet further by introducing humans to space and other planets, further reducing our environmental impact on the whole planet. And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the next five speakers are Craig Harvey, Brian Gibson, Pedro Vargas, Michael Shimmer, and Kayden Colbach. If you're on the Zoom, please raise your hand. If you want to be added to the speaker list, you can send me a message in the chat feed. Please note that we are on approximately pre-registered speaker number eighty-four out of one hundred and seventy-one. All right, uh, Brian, I see your hand is raised. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hi, how you doing, everyone? Uh, thank you for inviting me to this chat. Um, I'm not from Boca Chica, Texas, but I'm a local Californian, uh, specifically Los Angeles. I believe what SpaceX is doing, uh, will not only benefit the people of Boca Chica, Texas, what a lot of people pretty much, um, said, but would really benefit the whole country and the whole entire world. Yes, I do understand we do have to have environmental assessment. That, that need to happen, that definitely need to happen, and making sure that is a balance between their environment and also not only space development, but in development in general in a local area. I also feel that too, that, um, there should be like a local consensus in regards to that as well. They could have like a town hall meeting and where people could really, really, um, voice their grievances, uh, at a local town hall meeting. I believe what SpaceX is doing is great. Like I said, it's great for, and it's great for the country. And also keeps us in, um, in the cutting edge of technology. This also creates jobs, uh, not only jobs in the space industry. What SpaceX is doing for, uh, Boca Chica, Texas right now could also attract other, uh, country, uh, companies there, uh, Boca Chica as well. And it will allow the economy to really, really grow. Because, you know, let's face it, Boca Chica is not a rich area, but once SpaceX is there, other companies could go there as well. And that will, um, increase the job market there and also have local students and, um, you know, they don't really, they don't have to leave. I could imagine like a lot of local students, especially if they are into, you know, technology, will probably have to leave and go to other areas of Texas or other areas of the country instead of staying home, which probably a lot of them like to do. So I do support, um, what SpaceX is doing. I do support, uh, the locals there who are pretty much for SpaceX. I do also support the environment. Um, I do, um, believe that the FAA, FAA have to look at, um, aspect as far as what this is going to do
Thirty seconds.
Aspect of what they're gonna do to the environment and, um, into the low, you know, with, as far as the noise levels and also the wildlife. But I do throw my support to SpaceX, and thank you for this time.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm not seeing Craig Harvey, Pedro Vargas, Michael Shimmer, or Kayden Colbach on the Zoom this evening, so I'm gonna move on to the next five speakers, which are Naveen Nazimuddin, Rupert Goh, Princess Cooper, James Musselwhite, and Kayden Shannon. If you're on the Zoom, please raise your hand so I can identify you. Kayden, I see your hand. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hello?
Uh, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Kayden Shannon. I'm from Pennsylvania, and I'm speaking for myself tonight. It is my personal belief that Starship and Super Heavy should be able to fly from Boca Chica, Texas. To start, I'd like to mention the support from the residents of Brownsville. Plenty of people who live there have made statements on, on Monday as well as today, a lot of which are positive. A bunch of kids and adults who visited the building launch site last week with one of the posters saying, "Thank you, Elon," and a school bus with "Thank you, SpaceX" written on the windows. This is just one of the ways locals have shown support for the Starship program, which has helped their economy drastically. The second subject I'd like to mention are the environmental impacts of Starship. Without question, there will be impacts of a full stack launching and landing. Elon Musk started his various companies to improve human life. He seeks to combat climate change and to make Earth a more sustainable place for us to live and to become a multi-planetary species. I personally do not believe that a person who sunk all of his one hundred eighty million dollars of earnings from test, I mean, from PayPal in the early two thousands, before he was a billionaire, to make Earth a better place for us to live and for our species to become multi-planetary, would start a project that would only make our environment worse. SpaceX won a contract from NASA to, uh, land humans on the moon by twenty twenty-four. The benefit of having this contract is that they will be on a celestial body that contains resources for making solar panels, which are polluting to create here on Earth. Without, without, with, with Starship, sorry, um, we can create massive solar, a massive solar farm in low Earth orbit, which would be much more efficient than on Earth. This electricity could be beamed down to Earth using lasers and, um, uh, receivers on the ground. This is just one of the various ways Starship could help reduce emissions and pollution. We shouldn't delay progress of the entire, we shouldn't delay progress of helping the entire Earth and its inhabitants just because there is a possibility of harming one small area, which there are countermeasures we can take to protect the land and wildlife. To conclude, my message to the FAA is to give clearance to SpaceX to fly Starship and Super Heavy from Boca Chica, Texas. Stop delaying our progress to land humans. Stop delaying our progress to land humans on the moon and eventually Mars. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and Godspeed SpaceX.
Thank you for your comments. Princess Brittany, I see your hand is raised. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity to speak. And my name is Princess Brittany and I was born in Houston, Texas. I've worked with several presidential campaigns, most specifically around the country with our former President Obama and Trump. And I'm proud of my country and my birth state of Texas. At three years old, I moved from Houston, Texas to Palo Alto, Oakland, and San Francisco, then later grew up in Sacramento and Laguna. I no longer live in California, but my heart is still with California and Texas. Not many people respect the potential impact of space technology in California as much as I do. Even though I don't live there anymore and really just am a permanent resident of the East Coast. First and foremost, let's not politicize space exploration and rocket science. Labeling this SpaceX program as racist because it was developed by a Republican President Trump is not a productive contribution to this discussion. Rocket science is no part, is not partisan and it is essential to the sophisticated STEM advances in America. We must be taken seriously as a leading, focused and united military competitor amongst the threat of our enemies. When it comes to winning at space development, there is no room for divisive partisanship. Safeguarding this new SpaceX project against potential hacking from Russia, China, and North Korea is essential as well. Evaluating potential environmental impacts to the Gulf of Mexico, coast of California, and Florida if such possible hackings were to occur is important. Such hackings could result in tsunamis and earthquakes along coast of California and Florida if there is no intervention. Awareness of, well, as we know, there were recent super missile launches by China as well as sea missile launches by Kim Jong-un in North Korea just as early as this week, a couple of days ago. We need research and development of potential interception methods. In conclusion, I fully support SpaceX in their efforts to move. Thank you. I fully support SpaceX in their efforts to move forward with launching the Starship Super Heavy rocket. And thank you for giving me a platform to be heard and express my opinions and concern.
Thank you for your comments. I'm not seeing Naveen Rupert or James Muscle White on the call. Kayden Shannon, I do see you on the call. I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Kayden Shannon. Okay, Kayden Shannon, I've asked you to unmute. If you're still wishing to make an oral comment this evening, please send me a message in the chat. Okay, folks, our next five speakers are Paul Mamakos, Oksana Uzipov, Aaron Lewison, Jonathan Castandra, and Ronnie Green. Paul, I see your hand is raised. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
All right, can you hear me all right?
Um, we can hear you. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Excellent. I just wanted to comment on this because I don't really want SpaceX to build any of their stuff. I've lived in the Brownsville area all of my life and SpaceX comes into town immediately disrupting the local population, disrupting my beach access and just making a nuisance out of themselves with their loud, with their loud rockets at all hours of the day and night. I don't really want them messing with my beach and I've spent a lot of money to be down here and be a productive patriot of the local area. I really want to maintain that. You all really gotta go down there and see what's going on. I'm not really sure why they continue with this space hoax. It's really anybody's guess, but I'm saying it's probably something to do with money. Anyways, I don't want someone, I don't want a billionaire to come down here and hire a bunch of Mexicans because they're just polluting the local area. Anyways, though, instead of building giant exploding green silos, how about we fix the problems right here in Texas is what I'm saying. You know, once Trump is back in charge, everything will go back to normal. Really what I'm saying is that you should do the most, the best you can to stop this. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Oksana, I see your hand is raised. I'm asking you to unmute.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
My name is Oksana Osipov. I'm from Texas. And this new development by SpaceX is an investment into the future. It's the new jobs and another opportunity to put South Texas on the map. They will make a much needed investment into our crumbling state infrastructure. A number of countries in the world dream to have SpaceX among their assets. As a Texas resident and a taxpayer for eight years, I believe it's an honor to have them in our state. And I fully support SpaceX. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Aaron, I see your hand is raised. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Aaron Lewison. I am from South Dakota. I would like to thank the FAA for allowing me the chance to talk about this. I am not a native of Boca Chica. I'm not native to Texas. I have been down to Boca Chica. I've been down to South Padre. I have been throughout the Rio Grande Valley. I have many friends, many people I know that live throughout the valley. And it is undoubtedly one of the most impoverished areas of this country. Ever since SpaceX has been down there, there's been a jump in the quality of life down there. More money has been pouring in to the Rio Grande Valley, more jobs, more people. It's really, SpaceX has done many wonderful things for the community down there. SpaceX is a truly visionary company. Mr. Musk, his goal to make humankind multi-planetary cannot be bound by this red tape that we are currently seeing. His goal to make humankind multi-planetary species is not to run away from our problems on Earth, but to sustain mankind and find solutions for our problems here on Earth through the means of outer space. Starship is unlike anything humankind has ever seen. It is a truly revolutionary vehicle that has been a beacon of hope to many people throughout the world as the next step of mankind in our journey to the stars. As Mr. Musk has said himself, humankind's journey to Mars will be undoubtedly the greatest adventure that humankind has ever gone on. This is truly an amazing project. The FAA should do an environmental review to ensure that everybody that lives down in Boca Chica is not negatively is not harmed by the effects of the Starship vehicle. And the wildlife down there is protected as it is endangered, as has been previously mentioned. Last year during the cold snap down in Texas, SpaceX did provide to help with the sea turtles through means of generators and helping out with the turtles. And I would like to thank you for this talk, for this chance to talk. I've been down to Starbase and it is truly amazing what they're doing down there. And I would implore everybody out of the FAA to allow SpaceX to continue. Thank you for your time. God bless you all. Godspeed SpaceX.
Thank you for your comments. Jonathan, I see your hand is raised. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Castañeda. I'm from Mexico. I'm a citizen of the world and I speak for myself and in favor of SpaceX activities in Boca Chica or Sarves, whatever you wanna call it. There will always be resistance against something new, as history has shown us before. But right now, the United States has an opportunity to show the world how to lead in this regard. Right now, it's only SpaceX, but very soon, before the end of the century, I swear that there will be plenty of private companies and governments around the world that will make the same thing. It is simply inevitable, no matter how hard people try to stop it. So I think this is a good opportunity to make a system that works accordingly to the rapid pace of these new companies. Honestly, it's not hard to see that SpaceX as a company is as reliable as any old space company. And it's having a good impact in the communities around Starbase. So I'm not saying, yeah, go ahead and approve anything they say. For sure, this will need to meet the environmental requirements. But the fact is, there are bigger fishes to chase in other industries right now that are damaging our planet way more than space companies. I'm just saying, this needs to be done correctly and quickly, and it's possible to do both. The impact that this program is having in younger generations, not only in the States, but in Mexico and around the world, it's truly inspiring. And inspiration can lead to the many changes the world needs right now. Thank you very much. Muchas gracias.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next speaker is Ronnie Green, who I am not seeing on the Zoom. All right, I'm gonna place the next five speakers in the chat. William Moldstad, Zach Albrecht, Craig Nazor, Leo Tretra, and Milton Smith. Craig, I see your hand is raised. I'm asking you to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
My name is Craig Nazar. I'm the conservation chair of the Lone Star Chapter of the Sierra Club. A brilliant human once said, "On Spaceship Earth, there are no passengers. We are all crew." This means all of us, all humans, animals, and plants. Every living thing affects every other living thing. Through time, evolution has formed an ecosystem that makes the Earth livable for all crew members. The totality supports all individuals and is necessary for all life. Too often in the past, the concept of environmentalism has left out human culture. This is because advanced human culture over the past few hundred years has behaved irresponsibly and is now affecting the ecosystems that sustain all life in a way that undermines all life. One of the biggest problems the Earth now faces is climate change, but not all humans have an equal part in this. Different human cultures have had different impacts on the planet. In fact, most human culture, through most of time, these cultures have been present, has had environmental impacts slow enough so that others of the Earth's living things could evolve to balance these impacts. Ecosystems stayed strong and functional, but now that has changed. The actions of a growing minority of humans is now putting the whole planet at serious risk. Some say the solution is to leave Earth, go to other planets. We should leave this dying, polluted Earth behind to whomever chooses to stay and die along with it. Others say, no, we should rebalance the only planet we have. We should adapt strategies learned from a million years of humans living sustainably on the Earth and develop new strategies. The truth is, we might be able to do all of these, but we must not let one destroy the other. It is clear that SpaceX has begun to throw the South Texas environment out of balance and threatens the human cultures that have lived there sustainably for thousands of years. If we move too fast, it may work for those anxious to leave Earth, but it threatens to destroy the beautiful and sustainable South Texas environment and cultures that I know and love. I have visited the valley for over forty years. I fish the Gulf of Mexico and the Laguna Madre. I've spotted endangered species of birds, reptiles, mammals, insects, and plants. I've shared the surf with dolphins, sand sharks, and pompano. I've eaten incredible meals at local restaurants and I have purchased beautiful art from native cultures.
Thirty seconds.
I have never ridden in a spaceship, other than the one in which I already ride. Most of us never will. Should we risk destroying what we have so a few can go to Mars as soon as possible? Let's protect what we have. At the very least, please do a full environmental impact statement for the greatly increased activity proposed for SpaceX. Protect both the people and the wildlife of South Texas and then extend out into space. Don't risk the paradise we already have for a little-known destiny.
Time. Thank you for your comments. Okay, Zach, I see your hand raised. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hello, I am Zach Albrecht, an engineer in South Texas. The region we are in does not have much industry outside of the petrochem and agriculture businesses. The region has been victim to brain jarring and low-paying jobs as people flock to Houston and San Antonio. SpaceX represents a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get a new industry into the region and inspire a generation. This is even more important because they're an industry leader and devoted to reusability and thereby protecting the environment. There is no perfect way to build a launch facility without some damage to the environment. However, the benefits of reusable, cheap space flight by a responsible business partner far outweigh the cons. These benefits will be felt across the economy and research fields that will include and touch environmental concerns. And to shun the only company close to a reusable large rocket will set the world back many years. This will further harm the environment as we are forced to use non-reusable and more expensive methods of reaching space. This is an opportunity to have a Cape Canaveral in Texas that will bring tourism and industry to the area, which will further help fund the community and allow the community and state to form better environmental protections and take care of the currently protected areas. I trust the evaluation done by SpaceX and the EPA and ask that they be allowed to move forward with testing and operations at the Starbase facility. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, folks, I'm not seeing William, Leo, or Milton on the line. So I'm gonna move on to the next five speakers, which I have posted into the chat. Jonathan Smith, Taylor DiHelle, Alejandro Romero, William, sorry, Tim Williamson, and Kareem Rashid. If you're on, please raise your hand so I can identify you. Taylor, I see that you're on. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hello?
Hi there. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Taylor Dial. I'm a licensed civil engineer from Lemoore, California. I'm speaking in favor of SpaceX's plan to begin orbital launches of Starship from the launch site in Boca Chica, Texas. Although I'm not a resident of the area, I feel as an American and as a human, I have the right to support and urge the FAA to grant SpaceX appropriate approvals to continue development and orbital launches. This program will benefit a large majority of people, including but not limited to the community in the surrounding area. We have heard from community leaders urging support and we have seen school buses with children show up with thank you signs. Next, this program will help future users of Starlink Internet, which will be expanded through the Starship launches and would eventually help millions of people access reliable, fast internet around the world for the first time. Also, users of future satellites of all variety, which may now be larger thanks to this large Starship ferrying. And also, our children's generation will now have its own inspirational launches to the moon, which has not happened since nineteen seventy-two. And we all know that other launch providers will not take us there the same way as SpaceX. Furthermore, we will finally have capability to expand our exploration to other planets like Mars or planet-like moons with manned missions and eventually create redundancy to humankind by creating a Mars colony. This is in the best interest to all of us as a single species. To those voicing concerns around the program, SpaceX has the means and willingness to make right issues that may arise. I personally manage design consultants and contractors through FAA construction projects, and their oversight is a continuous job. Even with these initial approvals, the FAA will not abandon its duties to continually regulate and monitor SpaceX. However, it will obviously be in SpaceX's best interest to continue boosting the economy in the area, especially in schools, and supporting and protecting wildlife and mitigating any unforeseen issues as they will require continuous support from the community and FAA. Thank you, and please think about the big picture when considering this project.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next speaker is Alejandro. I see your hand is raised. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Oh, hi. Is this on?
Yes, this is Alejandro.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yeah, I'm Alejandro Cantorilla Romero. I'm a physics student from Spain, and I'd like to comment about this review on my own because as a space industry enthusiast, I feel my opinion may count even if just by a bit. I live in a family that's been traditionally poor. My grandmother lives in what's considered Spain's poorest neighborhood. And all I can say personally is that I wouldn't want anything here more than a big technological project that could boost our communities, which could be benefited from the inspiration and employment in the short and long term. I see Brownsville, and I feel jealous. I like what some locals have mentioned. I'm aware of the fact that SpaceX last year, in just a weekend alone, set up a massive local campaign, hiring campaign, where more than 500 people found a place to earn their life fairly and squarely in what can be considered the most ambitious rocket enterprise since the Apollo program in the 60s. From an environment perspective, I'll reserve my opinions on some of the most pathetic comments I've heard in that sense, but as a personal note, I also live close to a wildlife refuge next to the coast. And here at the other side of the pond, we closed the beaches to the public. We don't have locals living there, and we don't drive with our cars on the sand dunes. I know Texas likes it a lot to be lawless, but you guys, when it comes to laws, you only like them when it is to punish the rest and not your own despicable actions. For the environmentalists supporting these locals, in terms of beach closures, it's absolutely horrendous that in 2021, anyone who considers themselves environmentalist would even call for humans to be accessing a wildlife refuge like nothing and throwing junk all over the place. As we've seen at the Cape Canaveral Space Force Station and at Jason Kennedy Space Center, the limitation of human activity actually makes the local ecosystems thrive and prosper. And it has shown that the coexistence of rocket science and development and responsible care of the nature is possible. Seventy years ago, there was a town right there in that place, and the locals were kicked out by eminent domain. I can only wonder how about that place will be now if it had developed into yet another tourist town. If the locals at Isla Blanca and South Padre Island feel bad about Boca Chica Beach access and environment, they should know that the place where they live in right now will be much prosper if they hadn't been living there in the first place. Lastly, I should give a couple of examples of places that were decades ago in the low numbers in terms of good pay and quality jobs, such as Houston, where NASA set up the Johnson Space Center 60 years ago, or Hansville in Alabama, where many of the rocket factories from other companies like ULA, Blue Origin, and so on, feed the brains of thousands of local students and give jobs to hundreds of local people and keep a supply chain around the US that provides even more jobs. And SpaceX is no different in this front, with suppliers from Washington, Oregon, Michigan, California, et cetera. Finally, I'm going to thank you, the FAA. I have total confidence that you guys are going to do your fair job on this, and I'm happy with whatever outcome is from this review. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I am not seeing Jonathan Smith, Tim Williamson, or Kareem on the Zoom. So I've pasted the names of the next five in the chat. Alex Stambar, Jose Rodriguez, Dylan Britzmeister, Russell Sutton, and Bruce Lung in the chat. Russell, I see your hand is raised. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Russell Sutton. I'm a resident of Detroit, Michigan, and have a biology degree with a chemistry minor. We all wear different labels that describe us, and sometimes they can come into conflict. I am a SpaceX fanboy. Shout out to Tim Dodd, Scott Manley, and my fellow Tank Watchers, but I'm also an environmentalist. As a Michigander, surrounded by Earth's greatest natural resource, I take the environment seriously.
Russell, I apologize. I need to pause you just a minute. Our translator lost her connection, and we just need to reassign her really fast so that your comments can be translated. So give us just one moment.
That's perfect. I did bad.
Okay, Pamela, can you hear me? Great, thank you. Okay, Russell, go ahead and proceed with your comments.
Okay, so yes, my name is Russell Sutton. I'm a resident of Detroit, Michigan, and have a biology degree with a chemistry minor. We all wear different labels that describe us, and sometimes they can come into conflict. I am a SpaceX fanboy. Shout out to Tim Dodd, Scott Manley, and my fellow Tank Watchers, but I am also an environmentalist. As a Michigander surrounded by Earth's greatest natural resource, I take the environment very seriously. With that said, this PEA document is woefully inadequate in addressing many of the proposed expansions in Starbase. Already, we have used numerous PAs which pushed the limit of the original 2014 EIS. While there are many concerns, I will be focusing on the gas-fired power plant and the pre-treatment systems. It is my understanding that many components associated with those systems are omitted entirely in the document, such as oil storage tanks, amine reboilers, thermal oxidizers, process flare, and condensate loading equipment. In Section 3.14.4.1 concerning energy supply, we continue to see glaring omissions. Nowhere does it say where or how the fuel will be transported to the power plant. It is assumed that a nearby pipeline, which runs through federally protected lands, will be recommissioned to address this. But again, this document does not address this. The whole chain of production, refinement, and transportation of fuel are just not in the report. I also noticed a little trick in the wording in this section. It states that the propellants for the rockets won't affect local supply chains, but failed to mention that the strain on local supply concerning the fuel for the power plant. Again, these are just a few, but of many concerns not addressed in this document. The expansion of Starbase is necessary. I know Starship will reduce costs and save taxpayer dollars for the upcoming Artemis and Gateway projects. Starship will be the rocket that takes us to Mars. And on a more practical note, we need to stay ahead of the CCP. We claim to have higher standards than other countries, but the use of a PEA document for a large gas-fired power plant would diminish our environmental leadership. It is my understanding that the Clean Air Act of 1963 could give environmental groups and others the power to force the FAA's hand to do an EIS. Legal challenges will only delay the expansion even more.
30 seconds.
I propose that SpaceX and the FAA devote man-hours to expedite the development of a robust EIS document to prevent legal challenges and delays. Thank you for your time, and God bless America.
Thank you for your comments. Jose, I see your hand is raised. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Jose Rodriguez. For the record, I am a Texas resident. Brownsville, Texas was rated the poorest city in the country with 36% of the population living in poverty. The whole thing changed when SpaceX arrived and created 2,000-plus jobs for locals. They improved tourism. They made small businesses have more clients. People saying the environmental assessment is poorly done, but if they cared to read, it's for five lunches a year. They would produce methane, oxygen, and L2 liquid nitrogen from the air, from the atmosphere. They even bought oil rigs to transform them into sea launch platforms to avoid noise pollution and threats to the environment. People against this are against progress, are against the United States achieving the impossible again. I know you all already heard a lot of Cape Canaveral arguments, but for example, the Cape is a natural reserve with 100 times more life than RGV. And a rocket launch is there twice a week. The Saturn V launched there, the Shuttle did as well, and there was no environmental issues at all, even though those polluted way more. Additionally, the Starship program is going to be crucial for national security and military as it can put larger military satellites into lower orbit and beyond. Not just that, but also it's being planned to deliver point-to-point cargo to any place on Earth in less than an hour. The benefit that would have for military operations of our country is huge. We need innovation. We need investment in our state. We need jobs. This is going to make RGV the area, RGV area the start point of our return to the moon for interplanetary exploration and transportation. This will make RGV area the place where the humans' access to space changed forever, the place where it all started. The impact on the new generations is already visible with so many young people going there, seeing the history being made, seeing our future being built. I beg the FAA to please give those licenses to SpaceX. Many people, the whole world, needs these launches, just like Buzz Aldrin said in an article. Now go where no man has gone before. America should be taking the lead in space exploration again. Thank you so much, FAA, and everyone for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, folks, I'm not seeing Alex, Dylan, or Bruce on the Zoom this evening. So I've pasted the names of the next five speakers in the chats. Annie Carson Clash, Christopher Filon, Kenneth Teague, Viviana Trevino, and Russell Jones. If you would, please raise your hand, and I will ask you to unmute. We are on speaker number 114 currently. We're going to hear from these five people, and then we'll take another quick five-minute break for our court reporter and translator. Okay, Annie, I see your hand. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yeah, hi. I've been listening to the conversation so far, and I've only actually heard one teenager speak, and they are the next generation. And he was very positive about SpaceX and its exploration and its direction towards moving toward...
Annie, are you still there? It's a pretty rough connection. We're not hearing much of your comment. Annie Carson Clash, are you still there? Okay, I'm going to put you on mute and come back if we can get a better connection. Okay, Kenneth Teague, I see your hand is raised. I'm asking you to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Kenneth Teague, retired coastal ecological scientist, 40 years' experience in Texas and Louisiana in coastal environmental protection and restoration. I'm a certified professional wetland scientist and a certified senior ecologist. I'm knowledgeable and concerned coastal scientist and citizen of the US and the state of Texas and a fifth-generation native Texan. I have no conflict of interest. I am not employed by SpaceX, its contractors, or any of its competitors. I am a US citizen. FAA should specifically identify comments made by SpaceX employees or its contractors. FAA must determine whether NEPA leaves house for comment by non-US citizens or non-US residents. If NEPA does not allow for that, FAA must identify comments made by ineligible commenters and remove them from the administrative record. The original agency approvals that allowed SpaceX to destroy Boca Chica were made incorrectly based on intentional withholding full scope of planned activities. SpaceX and FAA selected what may be the worst possible environmental location for the facilities it constructed and for the proposed expansion of these facilities. Boca Chica is not Cape Canaveral. Cape Canaveral does not have Ocelot or Jaguarundi. The endangered Ocelot and Jaguarundi are iconic and injured cat species that are unique to this area and are already almost certainly seriously impacted by SpaceX. They are not doing well. They do not appreciate all this support for their destruction. SpaceX and FAA did not conduct an acceptable alternatives analysis in 2014, nor have they done so for the draft PEA. Acceptable alternative locations with far less environmental impacts clearly exist. The 2014 EIS underestimated the environmental impacts of SpaceX activities at Boca Chica. Are they being honest about their future plans? At a minimum, the existing and proposed projects significantly affect threatened endangered species in their habitats, aquatic habitats, legally-protected public use of the beach, a major wildlife refuge, and two state parks, and whatever is left of the community of Boca Chica Village.
30 seconds.
A hired police force which has abused... SpaceX was inappropriately issued a Clean Water Act Section 404 permit by the US Army Corps of Engineers. SpaceX did not comply with the 404B1 guidelines and isn't in compliance with it. The existing and proposed projects violate the Barriers Resources Act. This is not trivial.
That's three minutes. Thank you for your comments. Chris, is he? Your hand is raised. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, I'm from Corpus Christi, Texas. I'm calling in because I'm concerned about what I see as an abuse of power. And I want to go ahead and back up what Rebecca Inahosa said. This is environmental racism. This is colonialism. I'm 52 years old. I'm a fifth-generation Texan. I live in Corpus Christi, Texas. I know Rebecca Inahosa because she brought water to my community when a refinery poisoned our water and we couldn't drink out of it. That's because the TCEQ and the EPA and my city, Corpus Christi, were not taking care of the business that their job is, and that is to keep the city and the water safe. Now, the FFA has a job now. And allowing this company, and this is a company, this is not part of, you know, rah rah, USA. No, this is a private entity, and it's undemocratic. And that's another point I want to make. This is an undemocratic entity, and it's operating outside of the constraints of democracy that we had agreed upon. And it's operating outside of the agreements that it made with the FFA already. So it needs a full environmental assessment, okay? And why, this is a weapon system. You're testing a weapon system. You talk about all this, your cult members. This is a weapon system. It's going to hurt people. It's going to murder people. We built our space station out of cooperation, international cooperation. We were moving towards that, and now we've seen this horrible slide of humanity of our society. Now, we do not need to give up any of those birds or anything down there. The only reason they're here is money, and it's here because it's cheaper. They can go to other facilities and test their rockets. They want to, of course, who doesn't want to go set a little tiny house out on the beach and have their own little thieftum? But that's not the way that democracy works. This isn't a company that's run by one individual or even a board. This is a democracy, and I'm here to ask the representatives of that democracy, which right now is the FFA, to do a full environmental assessment of anything that they do down on Boca Chica Beach. And I further think that... And I further think that there should be another formal meeting because you did not put this out in Spanish.
Time. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Russell Jones. Russell, I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Russell Jones?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
I'd like to address the guy who said when it gets to forty launches a day, that'd be a big problem. By then, the launches should be occurring way offshore. That's the plan. Mostly, we've heard, not in my backyard, and I sympathize with everybody who's going through changes. But I think the scope of this project. I'm gonna go through some of the points that have been made. It's clear that it's gonna be great for the economy because it always has when that kind of an industry moves. When he bought out the little village in Boca Chica, my understanding is SpaceX paid three times market value. So there seem like good neighbors whenever reliable reports come out. I wanna mention Elon gave a hundred million dollars to an X Prize to do the one thing that could save us the quickest, getting the carbon out of the air. He gave a hundred million dollars, biggest one ever. Imagine having this meeting in nineteen sixty-two down in Cape Canaveral and think how much you'd like to delay it. Because myself, I believe I'm a citizen of the world, but I'm also an American and I have national pride. And how are the guys in the FAA gonna feel when the Russians or the Europeans or the Chinese land on Mars and we're not already there to meet them? Think about that. I thought the guy that said, let's do a provisional permit to let them go as fast as they want. And in the meantime, work with them. If you need to do an EIS, they can probably afford to do it as long as it's not stopping their progress. I like the guy who said Boca Chica is gonna be famous forever. I thought that hit a nice emotional chord.
Thirty seconds.
I'd like to mention Elon doesn't have a billion dollars. He's got enough stock so that he can keep a big influence in the companies. If he never sells any, he lives off of getting loans against the billions of stock that he never sells. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, Annie, I see that you're back online. I can give you another minute. I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Annie Carson Clash, can you hear me? Okay, I'm not seeing Vivian Trevino on the line. So folks, we'll take a quick two-minute break for our court reporter. We'll come back at eight thirty-seven Central time. And then we'll hear from Eric Jepson, Dan Holmes, Laida Snap, Bryant Ren, and Mark Fowler. Folks, I do wanna let you know, it's unlikely that we will be able to get to everyone this evening as we still have another seventy people registered to speak. We'll see you guys back in about two minutes to hear some more oral comments. Thank you. Okay, folks, welcome back. Can our court reporter and translator please let me know that they are ready? Maryam, go ahead. Okay, Pamela, Mary, you ready?
I'm back.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. Okay, folks, our next speakers are Eric Jepson, Dan Holmes, Laida Snap, Bryant Ren, and Mark Fowler. Dan, I see your hand is raised. I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Dan, I'm asking you to unmute.
Okay, how's my audio?
There you go. I can hear you. You have three minutes.
Thank you for having me. My name is Dan Holmes. That's H-O-L-M-E-S. I'm speaking today from Nome, Alaska. I'm speaking very strongly in favor of approval of SpaceX's continued testing of the starship and super-heavy spacecraft. Elon's special type of genius only happens once in a generation. He's like a Nikolai Tesla, Albert Einstein, Henry Ford, Thomas Edison, and Steve Jobs, all rolled into one. He's a thoroughbred champion who should not be hobbled. Give him a little reins, but let him run. As stated by previous speakers, the environment of Cape Canaveral has adjusted to the busy launch facility, just as the environment of the south coast of Texas will adjust to SpaceX's vital development. Also, Vandenberg Air Force Base has a very strong environment, even though there is a national security launch facility there, which SpaceX uses. My father actually, incidentally, used to work there in the seventies for Boeing Company, national security contract. He was a guidance systems on ICBMs. If he were alive today, he'd be very much an approval of this, as I am. The outspoken opponents of SpaceX in Cameron County are rightfully expressing their displeasure of the annoyance of having such a game-changing operation in their backyard. But to make an omelet, we must first break eggs, right? And SpaceX has been very generous and caring in its development to include the citizens in their success. Boca Chica has unwittingly become the local point of the evolution of mankind becoming multi-planetary. There is no better suited location in the United States for such an ambitious project. The fact that Boca Chica is facing the east coast and as far south in the United States as it is, it's an ideal location for using the spin of the earth to assist launches while endangering fewer lives in the process of launching over water. You at the FAA are acutely aware of these facts. The current world coronavirus infection emphasizes necessary for planting a seed of humanity elsewhere in this vast universe. The dinosaurs lasted over a hundred million years. We've only been here for a short time by comparison, humanity. Look at all that Elon Musk companies have done for the environment and think of how he is helping humanity. So naturally, he's become wealthy in the process. He uses that money as a tool, not as a way.
Three minutes. Thank you for your comments.
Time is the essence.
Okay, Eric Jepson, I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Eric, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much and thanks for the opportunity to speak to this. I am very much in favor of the FAA approving SpaceX's request. I am a lifelong space technology toddler. As a gentleman before me, Ed was my father. And I wish that he was here today to also speak in favor of SpaceX and their project. I am in fact a
Eric, we're getting a lot of background. You might need to mute your local speakers or take us off the speakerphone.
Sorry, is that better?
No, we're getting a lot of background and echoing.
Okay, sorry, it is better.
No, unfortunately not. It's a little bit better.
Okay, thank you. Once again, I have lived in Brownsville many years. I know
I can't hear.
Yeah, Eric, I apologize. We cannot hear you. There's too much background noise and an echo. You may wanna hang up and try calling back in.
I am trying now this other microphone. Is that any better?
Yes, that is much better. Go ahead.
So sorry, thank you. Again, not a lifelong member of the area or resident of the area. However, I have lived in Brownsville many years and in the Rio Grande Valley for over forty years of my life. I know the area quite well. I have family members as well as many friends in the area. I am completely and wholly in favor of SpaceX being granted whatever permits are necessary for it to carry out its activities. As a resident and a lover of this area and the beaches and also of its nature, I cannot understand how one can be opposed to the company that is the original company pushing the electric car to make our air cleaner and better and to be more efficient ourselves in our transportation. Also, SpaceX itself is certainly the cleanest and most reusable vehicle that has ever been produced. I don't understand how you can be against better, cleaner, and less expensive and more environmentally friendly. No, it's not perfect. Yes, there are trade-offs. But I think that the benefits for us in the area and for humanity as a whole far outweigh the risks or the drawbacks that we are seeing. Until recently, Brownsville was known for very few things. Despite having beautiful nature trails, despite having unique wildlife, the area was not an attraction to travel or to tourism, except for nearby South Padre Island. Now, I hear children, schools, speaking with hope in their eyes that there are interesting and exciting things happening, and this is thanks to SpaceX. I think there is nothing but good that will come to the area from this. The economy will improve, and there is finally hope for the future in this area, which was not expected by the residents of which I am one. Thanks very much for the opportunity, FAA. Please, please grant SpaceX the opportunity.
Thank you for your comments. That's three minutes. Mark, I see your hand is raised. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hello, my name is Mark Fowler. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Mark Fowler and I actually build public-private partnerships regarding conservation that include not only the government, for-profit, nonprofit, and local stakeholders. And I've been listening into this FAA discussion for the last two events. And I have to say, I think one thing that we are not seeing is that this is a huge opportunity for the area and for the ecosystem. I've been researching the biological assessment that the FAA put out with SpaceX. And I've also been researching the work they have already done in the region, which also includes, you know, saving thousands of sea turtles. They're working with the Peregrine Fund, which is the top falcon and bird-of-prey restoration organization in the world. They breed and release falcons, so the Alpamato falcon, the numbers could be actually increased. They're also working with local stakeholders on ocelot, on potentially breeding and hopefully one day re-releasing ocelots and hopefully increasing the habitat. One thing people don't realize is the loss of habitat is the largest threat to all wildlife. And if you look at the southern Rio Grande Valley, ninety-five percent of the valley has been degraded significantly. And there's an opportunity here. Instead of making one of the richest and largest corporations and individuals on the planet into an enemy and to, you know, making him into someone that they think has bad intentions. The reality is, this organization is working very hard to save the wildlife and also to bring a whole evolution of the economy. One last thing I'd like to say is that, you know, SpaceX and Boca Chica is almost exactly like Cape Canaveral and the Kennedy Space Center. Cape Canaveral Seashore and the Merritt Island National Wildlife Refuge are literally some of the most diverse in the country. It's one of the largest and most diverse in the country. And the Kennedy Space Center sits right in the middle of it. So, you know, that's since the seventies. We actually know what will happen. We have sea turtles, peregrine falcons, bald eagles, bobcats.
Thirty seconds.
Even Florida Panthers have been seen there. And it also brings something like one point eight two billion dollars to the local economy. So I think we have an amazing example of what will happen if this is approved and when this is approved. And there's an amazing opportunity for the local people, for the government, for the nonprofits, and for the for-profits. So I very much support SpaceX in this endeavor, and I believe it will be greater.
That's time. Thank you for your comments. Okay, folks, I'm not seeing Laida or Bryant on the line, so I'm gonna move to the next five speakers. Ian, I see your hand is raised. I'm asking you to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Excellent. All right. Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I represent no special interest group, only myself. I'm sure you'll receive many detractors of this project, both orally and in writing. And I would like to take my three minutes to briefly address some major concerns regarding the construction of the Boca Chica Launch Site. I believe that solutions to detractors' concerns can and should be implemented in a way that does not impede on the unprecedented speed and efficiency of SpaceX's operations. One major concern comes largely from environmentalists who protest that the launch operations will destroy endangered species and fragile wildlife. Although these are valid concerns, I call back to NASA astronaut Don Thomas's autobiography, Orbit of Discovery. He details that before one of his shuttle missions, his ship was attacked by a woodpecker, which patched dozens of holes into the external tank's insulating foam, significantly delaying the launch. In response, NASA worked in coordination with wildlife and environmental organizations to implement solutions such as hanging predator-shaped balloons and figurines around the launch site to ward off woodpeckers, which had the added bonus of ensuring their own safety during launch. This story serves an important lesson. Effective solutions to problems are possible that do not involve extreme and regressive measures. Effective solutions to problems are possible that do not involve extreme and regressive measures. Another major concern involves a gas plant. First and foremost, the idea that any sort of fracking operation or massive conspiracy or cover-up is taking place is not grounded in fact and is largely based on speculation. One primary argument is that SpaceX violates the mission thresholds by running a 250-megawatt power plant 24/7. However, the critic does not take into account that a 250-megawatt plant only needs to be run during launch operations, that such a plant will almost never be needed to run at maximum capacity, and also fails to disclose that per section 2.1.4.7 of the document, there will be a small turbine in addition to the large one. It is likely that SpaceX will use the smaller turbine 24/7 for essential systems and fire up the larger one during launch operations. Thus, the possibility of a fracking operation is limited, and natural gas may be transported from abandoned natural gas wells nearby, the underground pipeline that has minimal impact on the environment or wildlife, although this is not clear in the document. In conclusion, I fully support SpaceX's ambitions for their Starship Superheavy program, and I also acknowledge that for concerns of locals and environmentalists. Therefore, I only have four requests. Number one, SpaceX
Thirty seconds.
SpaceX should make clear in their document where natural gas will be sourced from. Number two, SpaceX should work in unison with environmental groups to implement solutions to their concerns. Number three, SpaceX or the county should build a separate access to Boca Chica Beach so that locals can enjoy their homeland while SpaceX conducts operations while they need foreclosures. And finally, these requests should be done with the utmost speed and efficiency so as not to impede on SpaceX's activities. Thank you for your time and allowing for me to speak to you tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, folks, I'm not seeing Mark, Jacob, or Victor on the line this evening. I posted the names of the next five in the chat. Before I get to them, Craig, I apologize, I almost skipped you, Craig, I'm asking you to unmute.
Is my microphone on?
Yes, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Craig Casper. I am a resident of Padre Island and I have read the preliminary environmental analysis. I'm actually surprised the mitigated EA is the approach being attempted. I have been the leader of nearly 15 EPA assessments, including 15 fully IASs. Based on that experience, I asked that a TRDIS to describe detailed analyses of the significant indirect, indirect, and cumulative impacts of the proposed actions and the appropriate mitigation for those actions be undertaken. It is criminal that individually significant actions, such as a desalination plant, are discarded without exploration. Significant secondary impacts, such as changes in population and increasing support industries developing in the area, aren't discussed at all, and significant cumulative impacts, such as increased tourism and fangirls driving around looking at the cool rockets, are discarded without discussion. The FAA is the cognizant agency for the NEPA Environmental Policy Act. It needs to treat it with the gravitas that that deserves. Facilitating the richest man on the planet to ignore the laws of the United States at the expense of low-income minority and vulnerable ecosystems is not the role that the FAA should embrace. It may be that the benefits of the proposal outweigh the impacts. It may also be that the currently proposed location is not suitable for the development and launching of Starship and Superheavy. Maybe the abandoned bombing range on Calabar would be better. It's further south and will provide more of a boost without the ecosystem damage. Without a complete environmental impact statement, in an effort to include all of the actions that will be undertaken on the site, it is quite literally impossible for anyone to know. Please begin the final EIS immediately. Or, if the need for this facility is truly of national interest, then appeal to Brenda Mallory at the Council of Environmental Quality for an exemption. That is why that option exists. I also want to say that I fully support Elon Musk dying on Mars, and I'm not picky about it being on impact or not. Also, Tiffany Mendoza, you, the translators, and the court reporter, oh my God, you guys are doing a heck of a job. I hope you all have rum punches in your immediate future, you ladies have earned it. Go Big Red, and remember to always throw the bones. Booga, 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 booga.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, folks, our next five speakers, and these may be the last five that we have time to hear from this evening, are Nicholas Morales, Ernesto Lopez, Richard Harrell, Stanley Nate, and Melissa Martinez. Ernesto, I see your hand is raised, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, we are a local family, our company Lopez Family Woodwork and Construction. We started with three team members building backyard fences in Bronzo. Then because of a town hall meeting SpaceX had in Bronzo, we had the opportunity to work at SpaceX. In one year and a half, we went from three team members to over 50 team members, which all are local Bronzo residents. We have, we also subcontract over 10 local companies to support us on different projects that we have at SpaceX. Bronzo is in the eyes of the world, and we can share our border culture to the world. Our downtown is growing with grants from SpaceX. Our students are getting more educational opportunities, trips to SpaceX facility. Bronzo overall is growing in many positive ways because of SpaceX, not just economically, tourism growth, growth of housing, more different businesses are coming to Bronzo, providing more jobs to our residents, and overall inspiring new entrepreneurs. First hand, we have seen how SpaceX is committed to help our environment by supporting many beach cleanups. They also assist with the past freeze to help the sea turtles along with different companies, such as our company and other companies that work at SpaceX. We're watching history unfold in our backyard, a glimpse to become a multi-planet species. One day we'll have tacos in Mars while playing Tejano music in a colony in Mars. And that's just one culture of many cultures that will be preserved throughout the universe. As a Purple Heart veteran, SpaceX Starship Program reminds me the meaning of the American dream, to always follow your dreams and to get the mission done. Thank you FAA, thank you SpaceX, God, country, family, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, Stanley Nate, I see your hand is raised, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you. The focus on protecting natural amenities and the local ecology is very much warranted. However, it is also important to note the incredible positive potential of the research and development being conducted at this site. I do not believe it is hyperbole to say that the technology being advanced at this location may be seen by future generations as one of the defining advancements of the 21st century.
Stanley, my apologies for interrupting, you need to slow down just a little bit.
Sure, will do. The road to becoming a multi-planetary civilization will undoubtedly be a long and hard one, and there is no guarantee of success. SpaceX's Starship project, even if entirely successful, will not alone allow us to achieve that goal. However, its immense capability and its focus on complete reusability are critical first steps along that path. Critical first steps that, to be frank, no other organization on Earth is currently seriously pursuing. Even NASA, which remains to this day the only entity to ever send humans beyond low Earth orbit, has not done so in nearly 50 years. And the current plan to return to the moon relies on the successful development of Starship. Extending our civilization beyond our home planet is likely to be the most difficult endeavor humans have ever pursued, but it is not an exaggeration to say that our best chance of success, and for the foreseeable future, likely our only realistic chance of success, lies with the budding development and launch site in Boca Chica, Texas. It is hard to imagine now, with humanity's space programs still in its infancy, the full measure of what that success might look like. But if this endeavor is successful, if we do become a spacefaring civilization, like those that currently exist only in the dreams of science fiction, if we're able to, hundreds and thousands of years from now, construct massive orbital space colonies, build cities on distant moons, even terraform other worlds, our descendants will see Earth's ecology expand into the cosmos. Earth is an incredibly rare world, perhaps even an entirely unique one, and therefore protecting and sustaining its beauty and its habitability are critically important. But equally important is proliferating that natural beauty so that Earth is no longer the only oasis of life and nature in the vast desolation of space. This is why I believe that the work that SpaceX is doing is critical to the future, not just of humanity, but also of the flora and fauna with whom we share this beautiful world. It is incumbent upon SpaceX to take whatever realistic measures they can to protect the surrounding environment and avoid undue inconvenience to their neighbors. But as long as they do so, it is also critical that this fatal work be allowed to continue, that the drawbacks of beach closures and intermittent sound pollution be weighed against the tremendous and unparalleled benefits that this project and those that directly follow from it will bring to future generations. One day, trillions of, one day trillions of humans living and thriving throughout our solar system, and perhaps even on worlds beyond, will be able to trace their origin back to the advancements made and the risks taken by our generation. Trillions of humans who might only exist because here, at the tail end of 2021, humanity made the bold and courageous decision to take our first fearless footsteps on the road to the stars. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I am not seeing Nicholas or Richard on the Zoom. Melissa Martinez, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Melissa Martinez, and I am a Texan, I was born and raised here in Texas, in Houston. So I want to talk about that for a moment. So, living here in Houston, you know, my city is all about, you know, renovation and being the capital of, you know, all these innovation ideas. And with that background of being a native Houstonian, and also with my entire family being from Brownsville and being raised in the valley, I want to take this opportunity to uplift both context of when it comes to, you know, the desires of innovation, and also, I really appreciate all previous speakers talking about wanting to, talking about sustainability and preservation, and all these big, bold ideas. Well, I believe that the biggest, boldest idea that's right now that we're discussing in terms of SpaceX is, quite frankly, listening to the communities that are being affected of this, and that's Brownsville residents and also Texans in general. And even though there is so much hopes and dreams when it comes to this ideation, but let me bring y'all down a little bit and say, this is the reality. The reality is, this will be historical in the making. But what's historical in the making is that this is the legacy of environmental racism continuing. This is the legacy of continuing ongoing colonization and ethnic cleansing in the Rio Grande Valley region. SpaceX, it's terrible to hear that, you know, SpaceX has never consulted with the Carrizo tribe of Texas and the original peoples here, such as also finding out that, you know, there weren't available Spanish slides. We're talking about a group that is being affected that is solely, the number one main language is Spanish, and you cannot tell me that there is discrimination not involved here. It is a prized concept of this, and it is also horrifying to hear that there is so much, all of these accommodations to a rich white man in comparison to the residents that will be affected in this community. So with that said, it's
Thirty seconds.
now, this is the present, the present is, the people are being exploited. Gentrification is continuing, so much colonization and white supremacy traits of this. This is not a lie, this is our reality and reality. This is valid, there is truth into this, and I really hope that y'all take into considerations of not only the biodiversity that will be affected, this is talking about black and brown communities being affected, and this is not
That's three minutes, thank you for your comments. Richard Harrell, I see your hand is raised. You will be the final speaker this evening.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Richard Harrell, I will be representing the RE community today, and, sorry. Here's no, on the terms of environmental impact of what SpaceX is doing in Boca Chica, I don't believe in the end it will be the biggest problem, you know? I believe what they're doing in the end will benefit all of mankind. You know, like, I can't believe we get to see this kind of stuff in our lifetimes, like they're building the biggest rocket ever made, it's amazing. But I think this contract should be given to SpaceX, but in the event that something catastrophic were to go wrong with the environment or the community, they should definitely be held accountable for it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we apologize that the time has run out before some of you had an opportunity to provide your oral comments. I know many of you have been waiting for a long time. Please remember that all comments, whether submitted orally, electronically, or in writing, will receive equal consideration. Please submit your comments electronically via the project email at spacexbocachica@icf.com, or you can mail comments to miss Stacy Z, spacexpeacareoficf at 9300 Lee Highway, Fairfax, Virginia 22031. Before including your address, phone number, email address, or other personal identifying information in your comment, please be advised that your entire comment, including your personal identifying information, may be made publicly available at any time. To ensure the FAA has sufficient time to consider public input, comments must be submitted by November 1st, 2021. Thank you for attending, this hearing is adjourned.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.